Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a brief moment of silence in recognition of veterans and those that have passed. Thank you. Good evening. This is our August summer meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. Just want to remind everybody that this meeting is being televised and recorded, even though you can't see any cameras, believe me, they are in the room. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting from July 9th.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Announcements from the President? I have no announcements in front of me. We'll move on to proclamations. I do have a proclamation to read tonight, and I'm going to ask if Mr. Michael Charles Mishley could just please come up to the podium, please, as I read this proclamation. It's always nice when we can read and present a proclamation to a resident who has been doing great things and, according to what I'm about to read, will continue to do great things. If you could just bear with me as I read this. This is a proclamation, "Whereas, Michael, a Bridgewater resident, served West Bridgewater High School as president of the Model United Nations Club, president of the Leos Club, coordinator of the Wildcat Mentor Program in the National Honor Society, in the National French Honor Society, and will study political science at Clark University. Whereas, Michael has worked diligently in the Bridgewater Town Clerk's office, preparing, filing, scanning, and recording marriage intentions from 1914 to present, which is the beginning of the town's public record digitalization project. Whereas, Michael is the recipient of numerous undergraduate school scholarships, including that from the Bridgewater Democratic Town Committee. Whereas, Michael was one of 48 students in Massachusetts to receive the 2019-2020 Leaders' and Achievers Scholarship Award by Comcast NBC Universal at the State House in Boston. Whereas, the Leaders' and Achievers Scholarship Awardees are students who strive to achieve their full potential, who are catalysts for positive change in their communities, and are involved in their schools, and who serve as models for their fellow students. Whereas, Michael was one of two students in Massachusetts and 104 nationwide, selected to attend the United States Senate Youth Program funded through the Hearst Foundation. Whereas, the Senate Youth Program is merit-based and highly competitive, ensuring the chosen delegates are consistently of the highest caliber in the nation, awarding each participant a $10,000 scholarship to the college or university of his or her choice. Whereas, the selection for the Senate Youth Program requires teaching nomination, holding a student body office, or other elected appointed office, an exhibited interest in government, history, and politics, a comprehensive written government and history exam prepared by college political science professors, a written essay, and a personal interview culminating in the selection by the Commonwealth's chief school officer. With all that, now therefore, the Bridgewater Town Council do hereby honor and commend Michael Charles Mishley, and wish him all the future success as he continues his education." That is signed by our Town Clerk, Merrily Kenny Hunt, and signed by all nine members of the Bridgewater Town Council. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the Citizens' Open Forum portion of our meeting. Are there any citizens here tonight that wish to speak during the Citizens' Open Forum portion of our meeting? Any citizens at all? Just take the podium and state your name and go for it.
Good evening. My name is David Moore. I live on 54 Flag Street. I'm in a butter to state property down there, and I was one of the 650 odd people who worked on Rainbow's End when it was built. And I was a frequent user of the playground right up until a week before its demise. I'm not going to debate some of the fine points as far as the toxicity of arsenic. I'd like to leave that for a later date, but I'm more upset with the process that not only Rainbow's End, that caused the destruction of Rainbow's End, but the sad shape of many pieces of town property. Rainbow's End was given to the town, or the control or the maintenance was turned over to the town for, it's my understanding, insurance purposes. Money was left over from the construction of the playground. People who worked on it were still on board to perform services down there, and the town never took advantage of those services, for one reason or another, and the playground won't steadily downhill from there. I learned of another park in town today that I had forgotten about, frankly, Jenny Leonard Park. That park was built around 1980 on town property by residents of the town, at no cost to the town, with donations. It was playground equipment down there, not pressure-treated, steel swing sets, seesaws, merry-go-round, a bathroom, and a pavilion, 30, I guess maybe 30 by 40 pavilion. I went down there today, and I had to look real hard to find it. The walkway off of Cherry Street is still there. It's a set of railroad tie stairs that go up. There was never any parking for it. People would park along the street, but it was a real sad state of affairs. And I could see that Rainbow's End, the way it was going, would have ended up in the same condition. But I did do some research on other playgrounds designed by the same gentleman, built out of the same material, and in no case did I find that any of those playgrounds were taken down or rebuilt with the concern for arsenic in the soil. There were not, yes, arsenic. And it was very upsetting to hear that. I think out of 12 playgrounds, two of them are still standing, but many of them were taken, most were taken down or replaced because they were out in a sunny location, and the sun beating down on the wood over the years. They had dry pressure washing. It only made things worse, so they ended up removing them. But it was more because of wear and tear of them being out in the sun. What I would like to ask for this evening is, I would like to ask for a public hearing on the demise of the playground, how it happened, and how we can prevent it. I'm not looking to go after anybody in particular, but I would really like to see more time than just what we have tonight to go over this, because I think it's got to change. I mean, that playground probably cost $100,000 to put it up to replace it. Today, we'll look at $200,000 or better. Marathon End, Marathon Park is in tough shape because of lack of maintenance. Jenny Leonard Park almost doesn't exist anymore, and that's on town property. So, we've got a problem, and we've got a lot of parks in town. I know we just hired somebody, but we've got a problem, and I would like to see this public hearing address not only Rainbow's End, but the other parks in town, and come up with some kind of a plan so we can get to work on saving these assets for the people of Bridgewater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak during the Citizens' Open Forum portion of our meeting? Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item E, Appointments. We have an appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. I'll refer to the Town Manager for the recommendation.
Mr. President, this is a little unique to the council, because this is filling an actual elected position under the charter provisions for filling a vacancy. There was a library vacancy created when one of the current trustees moved out of town, but when there is a vacancy in the library trustees, the trustees have 30 days from the date of the declared vacancy to appoint a person to fill that vacancy, and then the Town Council has a ratification or an approval of that appointment. So, I believe that the charter gives preference to the person who received the highest number of votes in the most previous election but did not get elected, and in front of you tonight is Matt Garretson, who did run and did not win a seat in the last election, and the library trustees have given that deference and have recommended Matt Garretson for appointment to fill out the remainder of the term.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion?
So, just to be clear to the Town Manager, the library trustees met and said, "This is the person we want to fill the vacancy," and just like when you fill any other vacancy, you can't do it in a voted body. So, they get to do it, and then they recommend it to us, and then we ratify it or not.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Matt, for continuing to show interest. We have no hearings tonight. We move on to Item G, where we have some license transactions. We have Petition P. 2019-012, Transfer of Common Victuaries License from Papa Gino's Inc. to New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papa Gino's.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Petition P. 2019-013, Auto Amusement License, New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papa Gino's.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? It's unanimous. Petition P. 2019-014, One-Day Entertainment License, Resident Block Party at Park Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question to the Town Manager. Everyone, all the public safety officials are in favor of this.
Correct.
Thank you. That was more for the public than anyone else.
Okay. Good question. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Petition P. 2019-015 is a change of manager of the 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we have Petition P. 2019-016, Change of Manager, Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Sorry, a question.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Which address are the Cumberland Farms?
This is the Pleasant Street address.
Oh, I see now. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Petition P. 2019-017, A New Common Victuaries License, Edie's Pizzeria.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Where is this? Is this a new place?
This is replacing what used to be Campus Pizza.
Oh, so Campus Pizza is just being reopened under a different name, new owner, all that thing. Very good. Good to know. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Okay, good luck to them. We have a presentation, a couple presentations tonight. We have, A, on our agenda is former Councilor Sandra Wright is here with Hope and Heroes Program for potential program at 80 Spring Street. If you could come on up and address the council on what your endeavors are, we'd be certainly happy to listen.
Thank you very much. Although, I'm going to turn it over to my builder here, who has a little more information that he can provide to you better than I can. This has been a project that's been going on for a long time for me, and we're just looking for that lot of land in which we would like to build the Hope for Heroes home there. It is a 10-bedroom home, so we will be bringing in veterans for transitional care, and we'll provide them services as far as education, life skills, and then after two years, they'll go out into society, or be able to go out into society on their own. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jeremiah Sullivan, and he will discuss it more with you. Thank you.
Won't take up too much of your time, but just briefly, just working with Sandra over the last few months, just with the Hope for Heroes program, and just a review of the site. Just a few things that we've, I've worked with Larry Sylvia, and we've just done some preliminary investigation of the property, the building. I believe you have the paperwork in front of you. Just a brief overlay of kind of a structure that would fit the back lot, but not necessarily this particular layout. Ultimately, we have people in place, vendors in place, architects. Larry, obviously, is on board, and we're really looking to take that next step and move forward, put a little more money and time into to see where we can actually take the property. We have done a few site visits with some structural engineers to look at the property that is up on the front of Spring Street to see, I believe you're using it for municipal storage. We've looked at the interior of that, and the bones is very good. Overall, the function of that particular building up front would be used for more commercial and admin space for this existing structure. Ultimately, overall, like we mentioned, we have a lot of people that are on board with the project, myself included, a few other people in the community, church organizations, veteran organizations, and where they all keep coming back to us and asking us, "Well, we're on board with this, but, you know, is it moving forward? Is the property going to be changing hands so that we're actually able to do something with it?" So, that's primarily why we're here tonight, present the project to you, you know, let you know that it's real, there's real people behind it, and, you know, ultimately, you know, do we have, you know, are we allowed to put more money and effort into this and let the people start, you know, giving the donations needed to really push this project forward? Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Unless there's any questions.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Anybody have any questions? I have a couple. Can you, are you with Hope for Heroes?
I don't work specifically with them, but me and Sandra have just been working on this for like the last six months together.
So, who is Hope for Heroes? You are. So, you created, I'm just trying to figure out
Yes, sorry.
Who Hope for Heroes is?
Yep.
Yeah, we have a 501(c)(5) that we have going forward, and working with many different courthouses, sheriff's department, many sheriff's department, and just needing a place for these veterans to come out or to be in a residential area where they can be trained. Some of them don't know how to do checkbooks, they don't know how to do laundry, they don't know how to cook, they don't know how to do anything. These are the skills that we're trying to get them. Also, we're trying to give them jobs before they leave the home.
So, you created Hope for Heroes? So, it's, okay, so how long has it been, like, in existence?
About a year and a half.
And I think that there are an awful lot of municipalities lately that are getting approached by, I think there's a federal program to do projects like this, and they're looking for spaces in certain municipalities to do that. I just didn't know if you were part of that government program.
No, I'm on my own. I'm not involved in a big entity. This home is also going to be managed 24/7. There will be somebody there at all times.
Yeah.
There will be councils, there will be social workers, there will be just a lot of people around the clock there.
I certainly love the concept, Sandra, of what you want to do, and I know that there are many municipalities looking at programs like this. I didn't go through the building like your developer did. I don't know the bones. I mean, I don't know, I just don't think it's, I think you're doing the veterans a disservice putting something in there. I think we can do better and find a better spot for them somewhere else, perhaps, in the community. I don't know. That's just my take on it, but I'm just one person. I love, I like the concept of what you want to do, whether that's the location, I'm not sure it's the best location, or even if the building has never been lived in, it's been a warehouse, it's been a garage, it's like, you know, I don't know what my colleagues' thoughts are, but that's just my
The reason why I liked that area was because, obviously, these gentlemen are not going to have vehicles or transportation or anything. It's, you know, kind of central downtown, where they have access to Drugstore, they have access to the supermarkets, they have access, you know, where they can get to the library or whatever they need to get to. They're right there in the center of the town. I think that, you know, it has benefits in both ways. We're trying to make it, you know, not only a home, then we're trying to make it into commercial, which we will be bringing in just a lot of different vendors who, you know, will open up their stores there. So, I think it, you know, it's a good mixed use for that particular area, and I chose that because it was so centrally located. The college is right there if they want to attend college. Worked, you know, I've talked to President Olbert College about, you know, getting them in. I know there's a Veterans Affairs person over there, and kind of getting them back into the community.
And ultimately, the building up in the front, it's not necessarily that we're looking to just keep that building in place. Originally, it was thought that it was decayed enough to just take down, but after just, like, in further investigation, but we're not looking to utilize that building as the main, you know, space to, you know, for the housing. Ultimately
It's one building, though.
No. I think that's where I was just going to ask for a point of clarification.
It's one building.
You're talking about building a separate standalone building out back. That's the house.
Out back. Yes, correct.
And then do some type of vocational workshop area out of the old highway garage.
Correct. So, it would be refurbishing the highway garages, because the initial thought before we did some site visits that it was fully decayed and falling down, but the brick that you see on the front face is really just a facade, and the actual structure of it is still very well intact. So, that would just be more for storage or training, or however, you know, ultimately the program develops, but the housing of it, the new building, would be developed to go in the back open lot area.
And this would be also working, you know, helping people and, you know, whatever we want to bring in, obviously, we're going to get approval from, you know, you and what you want down in that area. We certainly want it to blend in with the existing town.
Could you just briefly, Sandra, just talk about what that financial picture would look like for you? What would you need from the town? The land handed over? Would you need a lease? You know, what would that process look like?
I mean, I've talked to Mr. Dutton on several different occasions, and, you know, I really don't know.
Okay.
I'm open for whatever. I know we've gone again before the state, where, you know, looking for $4 million, but I can't tell them where it is, so they're not going to give us any money. And, you know, as far as different people who are backing us, they want to know where the building and where our structure is going to be for these homes, or these houses for the veterans. So, I mean, we're really open. We'd love you to, you know, you can't give us land and you can't give us building, but we're, you know, we'd love to work with you and see how we can make this a town thing for the veterans. I'm not necessarily saying, it's not really mine, I have the idea, but this is really your project for the veterans.
Anybody else? Peter?
Perhaps there's a question for the Town Manager or Town Attorney. So, when the town owns land, and we want to, we can't just give it to a nonprofit, right? There's got to be some RFP process. What is the, I mean, there are presumably state guidelines for disposal of town-owned land. Perhaps you could outline those, and under what sort of scenario would we be able to transfer title or lease to an organization like this for this purpose?
So, that's a great question. State law is actually very particular about disposition of real property, follows a procurement process. If the council decides that there's a piece of property, and we've done this before, if there's a piece of property that is to be accessed or is to be sold for surplus, rather, then you can certainly establish what you would like to see there. You can sell it for a particular purpose, as long as it meets a municipal purpose, but you can define what kind of entity you want to sell that to, but it does then go through a municipal process, or a procurement process, open bid process.
So, we could, the town, I guess we were kind of faced with a similar scenario with the Town Hall, which we deemed a surplus property, and we put out a requisition for proposals, and we left that pretty wide open and said, "Whatever you think, whomever you are, whatever you think would make a good reuse of this property." But here, for this sort of purpose, the town could say, "We'd like to establish a supportive housing facility for veterans, and whoever you are, come forward with your proposals, and we'll take those proposals and review them, gauge the public interest and feasibility of these projects, and then make a decision and sell it or not."
Exactly.
So, okay. Thank you.
I mean, originally, I think I had thought maybe even a lease, but you can't, and I think I'm correct in saying, you can't give a lease for 100 years or 99 years. So, I think, you know, and that would be something the attorney would have to guide me in, because I'm not familiar with what the stipulations on that.
Well, it changes, because I just want to let my colleagues know that, you know, remember, I put something forward several months ago about the Highway Barn in coordination with cleaning up the Town River Landing, so we could get our park system, you know, back up and running, and there's some plans to go with Styles and Hart off a high street to connect the two. So, I mean, my real plan was to tear the thing down and make it parking, because that's what's needed down there, and that's still in front of us. It's, I believe the Town Manager was looking, I think it's been cleaned out, it's been tested for, or being tested for ways, you know, contamination or arsenic, whatever we have out there. But, you know, it's being tested, so we can see what we're dealing with, but again, I don't, I think there may be, you know, if the McGelwain School Project never goes forward, maybe perhaps that's a perfect place for what you want to do, so.
I think that's a whole lot bigger than what I'm
No, it's perfect. I think it'd be perfect.
10 bedrooms. I'm not, I don't want, I don't want
Well, anyway, I mean, I'm just one person. I like the concept of what you want to do, but I don't think that's the best location in my view, and I have got other ideas of what I'd like to see that particular area become, but maybe there's another building at the end of Hale Street that's been torn down, that you could build something on that and deal with the college or something like that, but I'd like to continue the discussion, but I don't know what my other colleagues think. The concept is great, but
Oh, it is. You know, I really feel, you know, that this is something that has been needed, and I really feel that, you know, this is something that I want to give back to the town. I also, you know, felt that bringing these veterans in, and you know how passionate I am, I brought in a dredge machine to the Plymouth County, and, you know, so afraid that we're going to lose lakes and ponds and rivers and everything, because they're becoming cranberry bogs, and we're not doing anything about it, that they too could, you know, clean up some of the areas in the town for just their service of doing it, you know. So, I think that, you know, we have a win-win here with the veterans giving their time, helping the town clean up, do the rivers, and now they're looking for us just a place to stay that's well-run and supervised. do the rivers and, um, now they're looking for us just a place to stay that's well-run and supervised.
But if we decided, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Dutton, if we decided that we wanted to sell this property for the purposes of a veterans' housing facility, that opens it up to anybody at that point. Doesn't guarantee that Hopes for Heroes would be the, the winning bidder or anything. It opens it up to anybody that's in, in that type of business.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. And I think that's what you have to do is you have to put an AP out for, you know, whomever. Whoever's interested in that.
Anyone else?
Could, could I ask strategically, is that, that your plan right now is that we put out a proposal and that it's restrictive enough that the amount of people who bid on the proposal would be so limited in a way that you would win the bid? Cause I guess I'm in two situations here. One, I'm curious.
And ask our attorney about that question before it goes any further.
Obviously, yes, that's the way I want you to put it up. But, um, obviously, you know, you, you'd have to put it out, um, you can put it out for, for that purpose. Uh, if the town is so looking for a home for the veterans as a community service, which you people would really reap with, uh, then you would put it under that. And whoever's interested, you know, surely anybody can, you know, respond to that.
So doing some of your research, is there any possible way that it could be a combined effort? That the town retains the property, but as a nonprofit, you build something on the site?
I, I, I guess I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I mean, if I'm going to put $4 million onto it, I, you know, want some more clarification and, you know, than I'm going to ask for maybe 100 years or whatever. I mean, I won't be around, but whoever it is then turned over to. But, um, I, those things would be up to, I guess, the attorney. I'm not familiar with, you know, how we can do that.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out, I love the idea. I love the concept behind it. I think the location is great. Um, it's close to the university, it's downtown, they don't need vehicles while they're residing in the home. Uh, I guess I'm just a little perplexed as to what the next step, like what are you asking the town to do? And what could this town's next step be if the town council's in favor of it?
I'm asking for the town to give us the okay to go ahead and break ground and start the project. How we do that, um, I don't know. Lease, own, I mean, I think that's something that we could certainly sit down and discuss and, you know, what would be the best way to do that.
Where, where is this building you want to build actually on the property? So if I go, if I go straight ahead, on the left is the cable TV studio building. So where is this?
So it's, there, there's an open grassed or old parking lot area in the far back of the lot. It would, it would primarily go in that location.
Well, that's the Town River Landing. I don't think you can do that, but, I mean.
Yeah, I think we can. Well, I, I mean, I believe in again.
That's part of the parks program though.
It's part of what?
The parks program.
I think you have to be so many feet away from the river and, um, I mean, again, that's why I had consulted even with Larry Silvers. Cause he has a lot of the information from years before you, Dennis, before you were gone. So, uh, you know, I asked him to look into that and pull up whatever records he had of, um, what could be put back there and how, how far we have to be from the, the river. Also, in that area, I don't want to take away from, there is a boat ramp there. I don't want to take that away. I still want that to remain, probably the, you know, city area where people can come in. And I want them to be involved with the veterans. Want them, you know, to be all part of the community. It's, it's their, it's going to be their home. You know, I hope that they take advantage of whatever the veterans can give them, offer them, serve them.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, after some conversation with Larry as well, like his preliminary plot plan actually doesn't show, um, one or two of the, I, I think it's the municipal building up front, it doesn't actually show that on the property. So his, uh, his recommendation, he wanted to just know, you know, should he plan to come out and re-survey the lot? Cause ultimately that, that's just an initial floor plan of, you know, just a concept of what could be there. But obviously with parking, um, and the square footage, it could end up being something smaller that's closer to the street. Uh, the square footage might not be as large, but maybe it's two stories as opposed to one. So the, this is just where we're at in like the, we're stalled in the planning stage because we just don't know how far we should actually, you know, continue withdrawing.
The 10 units would be the, the build, the structure you want to build.
The new building, yes, correct.
And then you, would, what would you do with the existing structure in the front of the property?
That's where we'd make the admin offices and commercial, uh, stores building. So, uh.
I, I still think that could still be a parking area.
Well, I mean, you know, if I wasn't serious about it, I've already put $10,000 of my own money into it, uh, which is okay because I, I really think that this is a project that is needed in, in the town of Bridgewater. But again, I'm not going to put any more money into it unless we have some guidance from you people of whether we should go forward and get some specimens and, and what was the other thing that they wanted us to do? And just see where we, where, where we stand and.
Any other questions?
I just want to, we've had this discussion about reuse of that property and, um, Mr. Gallagher, you pointed out, you, uh, a point that you thought that Highway Barn right on Spring Street would be great for parking. I just want to refer us all to the Downtown Revitalization Plan, which cited this site as one of the five areas for redevelopment. And there, the concept out of that study, which was endorsed by the town council, it noted the site as being 2.25 acres and it called for, um, the development of mixed-use commercial building, mixed-use building with commercial frontage and townhouses spaced for BTV and canoe rental to the rear. So I, I think the rationale behind that plan was to have commercial on the street, which contributes to economic development with residential behind and then, um, facilities for canoe rentals behind. So it's those three areas, it's recreation, residential and commercial. And this theoretically could fit into that model. And I think it's important that we not lose sight of this work that's been done already. And we, we hired Cecil Group and we had a, a process of public input. And this is a, what they cited as the best use for that site. It's not to say we're bound to that, but I think we can't lose sight of that.
Especially when we keep complaining that we do all these studies and don't follow them.
Right, exactly. And to that, to that point, we also are in the process of this overarching comprehensive plan where we're looking at a vision for the town, an overarching plan for how different parts of town are going to work together, how we're going to, you know, do community and economic development. So, um, I know no one wants to be told to wait and cool your heels, but perhaps it might, would make sense to wait till the fall when we get results from that process, which has been ongoing for, you know, numerous meetings. Keeping this in mind, I think this makes great sense and it, you know, dovetails with existing plans and, and, um, I think downtown is the place for, for people who are in transition and who have, who are dealing with some challenges. The access to public transportation is critical for those, you know, I mean, it's, it's really hard to get a job if you live outside of town where you can't drive anywhere. So I think this really does make sense. So I, I would just urge that we hold off, keep this in mind. I don't want you to spend another $10,000, Mrs. Wright, to, uh, to look at the feasibility of this. But, um, I guess I would urge for just that we go slow and not.
Well, I think that the, the, and I did look at the report on the project that you're mentioning, Councilor Cullen Botes, and that was before we had this potential project off of Plymouth Street that's being proposed off of.
The 40B.
Yes. That was before that, that's still in the works. And you have Broad Street in the works. I mean, for what I saw in the plans, it did not obstruct the Town River Landing. It was buildings on the sides, so you still had that opening straight ahead.
Right.
This would, this building would put there. And then the building, the, the, the concept of what is being presented to us tonight, most likely would not have, have an impact on our schools, but the project that's in the study would.
Not, uh, not necessarily.
Yes, it would. They all do, so.
That's, if you've got a, a residential development, one and two bedrooms, you're going to have a minimal impact on the schools.
Everybody says that and then all of a sudden it's a bus stop out there. So we're dealing with school, we're dealing with school issues as it is. So, so, I mean, the concept of what's being presented is, would, would not have that element to it.
That would be good.
So, I mean, we do have a lot of development in, going on in the town and we need to be cognizant of that.
Right.
The commercial bit that I'm hoping to bring in will also help the veterans to work in those stores or whatever, uh, restaurants or whatever we decide to bring in. So it will also help them to start a trade or a career or something that they're looking forward to doing.
Any other questions? Mr. Chase, yeah?
I'm just wondering, what do you envision as your primary funding sources? In terms of not only the construction, but the ongoing operation and maintenance upkeep of the facility?
We have monies from the state that we can get in. We also have a lot of funding from, uh, just private.
Private donations.
A lot, we have a lot, but we're just turning them away because we can't give them any information of what we have or if we have anything. So, um, they're just waiting. And the veterans, you know, the veterans are, they're ready to do a 200 motorcycle ride and, you know, bring in the money, but they want to know if we're going to put it here and not go out of town somewhere else. So I can't do anything until I have some direction. And we're meeting the voted directors that we have on board, are meeting tomorrow night to discuss, you know, and I thought I would be able to come back and give them a little more information of, you know, whether it's yay, nay, or, you know, let's look elsewhere. I really don't want them, my heart's really here in Bridgewater and I think it would be a great project for the community.
So are there any other properties in, in the area that you're looking at or just the specific one?
Just the specific one. I think it's just, you know, a prime location for what their needs are going to be. They're not going to be able to have vehicles. So it's going to, you know, be a hardship if we take them out of the town and then want them to get down to Roach Brothers and Mark or if they have to get to the drugstore or whatever. So I think that that's prime area for them, the schools, college, um, I think that's a prime area for them.
I could, I could even see the residents of this place facilitating the canoe rentals. I mean, that's one of the visions that we get, active place where you can launch a canoe, have canoe rentals. And, and this population presumably would be well-equipped to do that sort of thing. So, you know, younger and more able-bodied, that could be a perfect, you know, it's a short commute. So I think, see something like that.
We met with, um, well, I've been meeting with a lot of different veterans and, you know, just to listen to their ideas of, you know, oh, you know, they're really taking it personal now, oh, you know, this is our home. Not just those that live there, but this is all the vets' home. And, you know, they're looking at bringing in vendors, you know, maybe once a month and have an open house, a soup kitchen for, you know, once a month, just to bring the community in, invite them in and show them that this is what they're doing and, you know, this is what we've put into them. Like I said, get me out of the equation because first of all, I can't handle 10 men. But, uh, the people we have working in there will be able to, you know, take care of them. But this is, you know, this is going to be the community's home, even though I have the idea and I'm, I want to build it. This is really something for the community.
And just to be clear, we're, we're not subject to that floor plan layout and, and how it would lay out on the lot. If there's, like I said, obviously we'd be willing to work with however the lot would lay out to, you know, to, to create access to the river. If that, if that's the main purpose, you know, obviously these buildings can be, you know, configured on the lot the way they need to be to, to provide that access. But we're not, we're not stuck to anything. This is just an initial floor plan that was generated to just kind of see, see how or potential of how it would lay out. But there's nothing set in stone. Like I said, we're kind of, we're just at that stance, the development stance still.
And I think I had come up with that just because so many of the veterans were saying, well, show me a picture. Tell me what is it going to look like? And, you know, I had the architect down and, you know, kind of measure and look at what he thought could fit in there. So that was just really to present them, this is my idea sort of, you know, what I would like it to look like, you know, first floor. Uh, in case they're, have any disabilities, uh, so it'd be all on first floor. Uh, it's really basic. It's just 10 bedrooms, a kitchen and a, a great room. So anything other than that will be maybe over and where the barns are. Where we'll have, um, a section there where, where we can have, um, training, uh, some, you know, where it's big enough where they can have a function. We can bring in, uh, educational people to provide farm.
So you don't, you, you think this is more transitional for the veteran than, than, you know, they, they wouldn't be long-term?
Oh, no, two years is maximum. Two years is, uh, in, in talking to, you know, the courthouse is talking to the sheriff's department, talking to a lot of different people, um, I don't want them any longer than two years. I think that that's enough time for us to get them rehabbed, um, and get them, you know, what, another thing that we want to do is we want to bring the families back into the equation because a lot of them have broken families from drugs and alcohol. So we want to bring in the families and kind of mentor them and, and, um, help them get back as a family and give them, you know, get them jobs and help them in whatever training, whatever training. I, I don't know what's going to be brought to me, so I don't know what their needs are right now. But I think that it, that's a good start and we have to start somewhere with, you know, what do these people, what do these 10 guys need? And we'll go from there. I've talked to a lot of different, um, Southeastern Regional, I've talked to, you know, different schools as far as coming in, maybe training, you know, for electrical, plumbing, any of that. So until I find out what they, they are interested in, uh, then we'll, we'll bring in the resources for them.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming in. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have another presentation tonight, the Mitchell School Building Committee Report. We have the owner's project manager Shane Nolan here. Item B on our list tonight. More than just him here, I see.
I am not Shane Nolan. But I did stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night. In all seriousness, uh, I'm John Garrish. I'm the chairman of the building, uh, the school building committee. And before I introduce Shane Nolan, the owner's project manager, and Gene Raymond, our architectural team, uh, I just wanted to mention a few things about the committee. The committee, membership has been up to 15 members, eight of them voting. But I wanted to point out that it's a diverse background that, that the committee members possess from engineering to architecture, financial background, construction, parents, grandparents, teachers, former teachers, and then of course, uh, the administration that's been supporting the process. So we've had a very thoughtful meetings, we've got a lot of input that helped guide the committee to give the feedback to the consultant team. For the Mass School Building Authority process, it's pretty, pretty structured, some, somewhat rigid. But the team that we have working on our behalf of the district and the town and working hand-in-hand in the committee, they're excellent. They know the process, they know schools, they know educational goals. They've done this before and, uh, they're really doing a great job for us. They listen, they react. We've had many public input sessions. They've taken that seriously and made adjustments and we've been very happy with, uh, with all the work that they've done. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shane.
Thanks, John. Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. Um, I do have copies here. If you want me to hand those out now, I can leave them for later. Uh, but we do have the presentation up on the board here. I'll go through it, Mike, do you want to just go ahead? So, uh.
Sorry, would you, would you mind handing them out now? In case we want to take notes? Thanks.
No, I'm okay. So the, the Mitchell School Project, it really started back in February 2015 when, when you had the roof collapse. Pretty much overnight or during that, that February vacation, you had to vacate the school and disperse, uh, kids into the other schools around the, the town and the regional district. Um, following that in, in January of 2015 or 16.
Shane, are you going to take questions during your presentation or after?
Certainly we can do it during if that, that helps.
No, I just, I just, I just want to, I just want to ask you about that January 24th, January 14th, 2016 day. That was the first time that the district could actually apply a statement of interest to the school building authority after the collapse, correct?
That's correct.
So it was as fast as it could be done.
Yes.
Because of this rigid process that John talked about.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so 2016, the statement of interest was submitted, uh, in February of 2017. In February of 2017, you were invited into the eligibility period for the MSBA.
So now, just to be clear on that, I apologize, I'm going to keep interrupting a little bit. But essentially, the state didn't even get back to us till two years after the roof fell down.
The state gets between 80 and 100 of these statements of interest. They only have a certain fund that they have.
I'm just trying to answer the questions as to why is it taking so long? Well, we put it in the first time we could, and then the state took a whole nother year to answer us.
They go and visit every school that submitted, they shortlisted, visit them again, and it takes about a year or 14 months for them to will that down and invite people to the eligibility period. Following an invitation to that, the town voted to approve $800,000 to do the feasibility study and the schematic design, and that allowed the school building committee then to go out. In November of 17, they hired first the OPM, which is required under the Mass General laws, 149, and after that, we hired Gene and his team as the designers and consultants.
And so just to continue discussing the background of the timeline, if I may, this is going to be a theme on this slide, is within four months of the MSBA inviting the district in, we had a vote to approve. And then, the state then delayed until November to say, yes, your vote's good, you can go out and hire an owner's project manager.
Correct, so you're allowed to go out, but it takes a couple of months to put together an RFQ, a request for qualifications. We submit that, we came, we interviewed with.
It's all that rigid state process that John referred to.
It's the whole timeline, yes. So following that, we started the study, the feasibility study. There was three main aspects to that, there's what's called a preliminary design program, the preferred schematic design, and the schematic design. So between June of 18 and April of 19, we did the preliminary design program and the preferred schematic. That's when we looked at different options, we looked at different sites, we looked at different school configurations, we looked at different building schools on different areas of the building, we looked at renovating the existing building. And we looked at about 12 or 13 different options to come to what we call the preferred schematic design.
And this preferred schematic design also had to include educational objectives, not just.
Correct.
Not just how does it fit, or, you know, what's the lowest cost, it's we have to.
We have to look at a lot of things, and they'll come up.
And that's how the MSBA grades you.
Yes, so as part of that, the superintendent had to do an educational profile of the whole district, how the school would fit in district-wide, both for elementary schools, the middle, and then the regional high schools. So that was an 18 or 20-page document that the superintendent had to put together to identify the educational profile for the district. Coming out of that, we chose a new construction on the existing side of 500 South Street that was submitted to MSBA as a preferred schematic design. Was at that point, we went to the MSBA board meeting in April of 2019, and the board approved that as the project for the Mitchell School. Coming out of that, we moved straight into schematic design. We worked with Gene and his team to develop that design, the C61 building. And in July of this year, we submitted that to MSBA for their review. Last week, we went to MSBA, met their staff there for what's called the project scope and budget meeting, where we reviewed the full scope of the project, we reviewed the budget, we came to an agreement on that, and that will go forward to the MSBA board meeting on August 28th of this year, in a couple of weeks. So we're just before that, a couple of weeks before that, and then we're going to present tonight, and then we're going to come back sometime in September and look to move this project forward. Following that, then there'll be a ballot vote for the full funding of the project sometime in the fall or in mid to end of October. So going back to that process that we just spoke about, early on in the project, we put together an educational visioning team. We did three educational visioning sessions. That team was made up of people from the school department, the superintendent, teachers, there was parents, there was even students on that team, there was Gene and his team, we were there, and we also had a specialist educational consultant who came in and chaired those meetings. Coming out of that, we established these project goals or guiding principles, which were part of that submission that we sent into MSBA in April 10th. So just some of those, we can talk about meeting the educational requirements. It's a school, obviously, we have to meet that, we work closely with that team of educators and superintendent to make sure we met the education requirements for a school in the 21st century and going forward for the next 10, 20, 30, 50 years. Safety and security is a big concern with all schools now, we addressed that in the design, and Gene will show you how we do that in a moment. Better parking and vehicle circulation, always an issue with drop-off time and pickup time at schools, traffic. So we've tried to address that as best we can with segregating some of the drop-off parents with the school buses. Sustainability and energy efficiency, this building is going to be energy efficient. Not only is it going to meet the current energy code, we're going to exceed it by at least 20%. That's a mandate that the school building committee gave to us, and it also gives us additional reimbursement from the state. When we come to that, I'll talk about it. Better student health and wellness facilities, we'll look at that when we look at the floor plans. You'll see, we have a gym, a cafeteria, and other community spaces. One central entrance, I'm sorry, one central entrance and one main office in the existing Mitchell School. I understand there was three entrances and three offices, we've tried to consolidate that into one, we've achieved that. And then, the most efficient building and the best value for money, looking forward to the next, as I said, 10, 20, 30, 50 years. So we feel we've achieved those, we've submitted that to MSBA, and they agree with us that we've achieved all those guiding principles.
Good question. So I know there were a lot of other options, are you saying that none of the other options met the educational requirements of the students and some of these other bullet points?
They met them to differing degrees. The option we ultimately chose was what we felt was the best option educationally.
Well, Shane, essentially, if I recall correctly, there were various criteria to be ranked upon, and this C61 was ultimately the best across all the criteria.
Correct.
Right? It wasn't just educational.
No, we ranked, yeah.
It was all sorts of stuff.
10 or 12, and a lot of criteria was based on these guiding principles. And so it wasn't just education, it was a number of other factors that we took into consideration when we reviewed it and we picked that C61 option.
And when we say better parking and vehicle circulation, so none of the other options could be improved to have as good as parking and vehicle circulation as this one, is that true?
Yeah, I think most of the new school options, we worried to separate the drop-off vehicles from the school buses, not in all the options, not in the renovation options. So again, to differing degrees, and that's why we had that matrix that looked at all of these globally to see which was the best fit for the town and the school district. So tonight's presentation, we're going to break it down into our educational spaces, the site, and then, community and common spaces. So I'll just talk a little bit about the educational spaces, and then I'll hand it over to Gene to go through the floor plans. Can't see them very well here, but you'll see them on the next couple of slides. So part of the educational criteria, we wanted to break the school up into clusters. We managed to do that, we've broken it up into pre-K, K, first and second grades, and Gene will look at that in a moment. We wanted flexible classrooms that meet the educational program, not just in the shape of the classroom, what we do in the classroom, but also we looked at furniture, the layout, what's included in those classrooms, and how that best meets the needs of pre-K to second-grade children. Improved special education spaces, it's a little hard here, but you can see the green spaces on this. We looked at the special ed, it's dispersed throughout the school, it's not just put down at the end of the school. Those kids will be dispersed, they'll be part of the school population, and that's part of the submission to MSBA, that we do need to get that approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. STEAM and STEM environments was very important to the school. We've been able to implement that into both the classrooms, and we have a dedicated STEAM lab. STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. It's how you collaborate with those different subjects and disciplines. We've managed to incorporate that into it. Flexible layout, we have been able to design the school that if there's spikes in enrollments, we can move some classrooms around. Right now, we have 11, pre-K 11, first grade 11, second grade classrooms. If we needed to add an extra second-grade classroom, we can do that quite easily based on the existing configuration. And we've also allowed for future expansion, if you ever had to add four classrooms onto this building, you can do that quite easily. I mentioned the one main entrance and the increased security, Gene will look at that when we go through. Natural daylighting was important, every one of these classrooms will have access to natural daylight through windows. We've also been able to incorporate natural daylight into the corridors through skylights. And then, ground floor spaces for before and after-school programs, Gene will go through that. We've been able to segregate the ground floor, the bottom floor, so that can be open and separated securely from the rest of the building for before-school activities, after-school activities, and any weekend activities when the public might use the building.
So I have a question about the natural daylight. I remember reading one of the other presentations and twisting the building around so that it had a, I think it was a southern.
East-west configuration, yeah.
East-west configuration, right. So after that presentation, I was over at the high school, and I noticed that none of the none of the educational rooms at the high school had that type of lighting. And I noticed over at the old high school, any of those rooms that had that type of lighting had their shades drawn. So do you, what happens in the afternoon when the teachers need to draw the shades? Are they reducing the natural lighting?
So we will have canopies outside the building, depending on what time of year it is and where the sun is in the sky. You'll have shading on the building from the outside, then all classrooms will also have those shades if required. But part of the design is that we try and reduce any of that glare, depending on what time of year it is using canopies outside the windows.
Okay, that's, no, I haven't seen canopies before in this design.
Well, I don't think we have any elevations where we might be able to see them. Not necessarily canopies, but there is sunshade, they're 18 inches wide, not like an awning. With that, I'll hand it over to Gene just to go through the floor plans.
Great, thanks. So my name's Gene Raymond, one of the architects working on this. I'm leaving this slide up just to orient people. It's an L-shaped building, right? And there are, it's kind of three stories on the end of the building furthest away from South Street, and it's two stories where it's closest to South Street. Because if you remember the existing Mitchell, when you drive in, the site kind of drops off, and you can walk out at the back. So we're going to start with the ground floor and then work our way up. If, Mike, you want to switch the slide? So the ground floor is really what we call core facilities. And those big blue spaces are big assembly spaces. So there's a gymnasium here with 120 seats in bleachers. There's a cafeteria that is sized for half the school population. So if you ever did expand the number of classrooms in the future, that cafeteria does not need to be expanded. You could simply add another lunch period. There's a stage in between these two spaces, and that's one of the flexible features of the building. First of all, the kind of, I guess, more fancy performances would be opening up this end of the stage to the cafeteria. But if you wanted to have a whole school gathering or a larger gathering, there's another opening to the stage on the gymnasium side. So by having this stage in the middle, the school is able to make use of both spaces in different configurations. The only kind of academic space down here are these yellow rooms that are the music rooms. Everything else is up on the upper two floors. These are here simply because music performance sometimes involves movement. They could make use of these big spaces, and certainly the stage. So the nice thing about this is we're calling this also the community wing. It is completely segregated. You can come in from the parking lots, this entrance here, make use of these facilities, including bathrooms, and have enough exits, but you cannot go upstairs. So as a community space, it works very well for rentals or just use. So going up to the next floor, these upper two floors, like I said, are where the academic areas are. As Shane had mentioned, well, there's two wings, right? So there's a wing here that's oriented east-west, and one that kind of goes north-south. They're segregated by the main entrance lobby, and this is up at the level of South Street. So you drive onto the site, the main entrance is here, and all this purple is administrative areas, and the administrative areas completely control who comes in and out of the building. There's a man trap here during the day where you have to go into the office, get checked in, then you have to get buzzed into the lobby. At the lobby, we actually have made this another layer. We've worked with the public safety officials on a whole bunch of just general layout things within the school. But there's another set of doors going into each wing, and those would also require card key access. So even if someone were to get into the main lobby, they still can't get into the academic wings, and that's where the stairs and the elevators are. So it's really, you know, we're trying, it's kind of a multi-layer of security.
It's still harder for them to get in, you never want to say can't.
Good point. The object is to make it harder, to delay, delay, delay while evacuation can happen, while public safety people can arrive at the site. So thank you for that clarification, that's true. As Shane had, well, so this floor where you come in, the front entrance, and all the parents drop off and pick up, all these orange spaces on this side are kindergarten classrooms. There's 11, as Shane mentioned, and then the orange spaces over in this wing are the pre-K. So each grade level, you'll see the same in grade one and two, they're all on their own wings, their own areas. And all that kind of came out of the educational programming where it's very important to the school department that these professional learning communities, like all the first-grade teachers do a lot of things together, all the different grade levels. But the reason they're on this floor is because they're the smallest children. So they come in, and the classrooms are, they don't have to go upstairs, the classrooms are the nearest. They're also near to the school nurse, that's another thing that came out of the educational planning is, you know, these grade levels tend to need that service. The green level, the green rooms, which Shane had mentioned earlier, these are all the special ed and kind of academic support spaces. And the state requires properly so that they be spread throughout the school so that, you know, they're not segregated and they're part of the community. And the kindergarten have some kindergarten-specific areas, and the pre-K has some pre-K-specific areas. And then there's some common areas that you can get to off, right here, off the main lobby, so. These white spaces are the upper levels of the gym and the cafeteria. Those are, you know, hall spaces, and from this corridor, you'll be able to look down into them. What, I'll go up to the next slide, Mike, but on the second floor, these purple areas, this is the first grade wing, this is the second grade wing. So again, we're trying to, you know, clustering these grade levels together was one of the major things. And Shane had mentioned not only the window orientation, but bringing light down into the corridors, which we would do with skylights. And the reason is, a lot of these corridor spaces kind of have alcoves, so it's not just used for circulation, it's not just a, you know, a long corridor. But there's a lot of outside spaces where students can be pulled out of their classroom and have, you know, specialized learning, or group projects can happen. And this is a very common and a very effective educational feature of just about every school that's, you know, that's being constructed now. And what it does is it allows you to use most of the building in one way or another at different times for educational uses, not just corridors. So there'd be, what we want to do is bring light into the middle of the building, and that's how we've designed the. that's how we've designed the school. The blue is the media center, and then this area in here, there's a computer lab, a project room, and an art classroom. There's two art classrooms. But these three here all open up to each other, and it's to facilitate kind of project-based learning and some of these science and technology and art curriculum, the STEAM curriculum that Shane was talking about. So again, that came out of the educational program. We can probably go on to the next one. The site was a major issue at the old Mitchell. Everyone was coming in and out from South Street. Buses and cars were constantly in each other's way. And from what we've heard, there was major traffic backups onto South Street. So from a planning perspective, as much as we were concentrating on the building, we really were looking at different ways to put this building on the site and different ways to have the traffic on-site work well. So Mike, maybe we can just go to the next slide. So this is South Street here on the left side, going up and down the page. This is the L-shaped school that we just went, you know, through. And what we did is, the old school was kind of right here, right in the middle of the site. So what we wanted to do was kind of push the building to one edge of the site so that we opened up as much as possible for parking, play on the south side, so it's not shady. And I'm just going to, this red, what, we're gonna kind of start at South Street. We're proposing moving the three lanes that are there now, but this red pattern here would allow 63 cars to be on-site, kind of in a long queue, dropping off. And, you know, we're very confident that we're gonna pull just about everyone off South Street because people will be able to come in. There's no conflict with buses. They'll be able to drop off and then go back out onto South Street. We are showing a separate entrance on South Street for buses. So we really want to separate buses and cars. And so the buses would come in this way. They'd go around the back of the school. There's 24 buses that are gonna serve the school, and we can easily have them all stacked up here. And they'll drop off down at that lower level so the kids can come into that cafeteria or the gymnasium. Or at the end of the day, they can all be marshaled in those areas and then go out to the buses as the buses kind of come around. Instead of having the buses come back out and fight their way through this to get back out to South Street, there's, the plan calls for making a more significant crossing here, and then for buses only, coming out past the senior center and coming out to Bedford Street. And we've gone through this for multiple times with the public safety people, and actually a lot with the senior center. But did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, how have we addressed the issues with the seniors with the buses coming out? Are we gonna, last discussion, maybe talking about putting some speed tables to ensure the buses slowed down?
That's right.
And some curbing? It looks like that's what's in the picture now.
Yeah, so what we're doing is proposing, kind of formalizing the road here. Right now, it's kind of a big gravel parking lot. So, you know, some of the feedback that came from some of these workshops that were at the senior center, you know, we talked, there's a gate here, right, so people can't go through, you know, when buses, it's only for buses. But, you know, we've talked about signage, stop signs, a speed table here, a speed table over by the community health center. So those are, instead of having a speed bump, it's like you raise a portion of the pavement, you know, maybe 20 feet long. So you really can't just fly over the thing without messing up, you know, your car. And we've talked about putting curbing and kind of formalizing the entrances into the senior center. Again, I said, you know, curbing, signage, stop signs, et cetera, et cetera. The reason that we looked and we ended up with buses only is because the buses work for the school department. So the school department can say, and this was a concern of the police department, the school department can say, yeah, you go out, but you have to take a right-hand turn on Bedford Street. You can't try to cross and take a left-hand turn because that takes longer and it's much more risky. So there's, on the south side of the cafeteria, the way it works is, kids go down, they have lunch, and then they go outside for recess, and then they come back into the building. So there's a big K-2 play area right outside the cafeteria. Obviously, that's open to the public as a community amenity. And then we're gonna make use of the two existing playgrounds and the playfield that's out there now, add some fencing, and add some soft surface to those existing playgrounds as an insurance kind of issue.
Yes, sir.
Are the costs to the road improvements out through the senior center incorporated, subsumed under this overall project cost?
They are, yes.
Yep.
Because we really can't do the project without doing that or do it properly. So that's the site. Happy to move on to the next one if you want. So I think we've talked about this, but this is one of the slides that we've shown the seniors and other people during these community meetings. But just, you know, it's a school, but it's a community building, right? So the ability to have a separate entrance and make use of this whole lower level easily without having access up to the upstairs is a major kind of design goal, and we achieved that. When we started talking about the building with the public safety people, it was interesting because this is the two-story cafeteria, and it does face south. And we're making use of some of those horizontal shades that Shane was mentioning. And at one point, we had this as all glass because it's a, you know, we want, we want to encourage people to know that this is a big public space. And what we ended up doing with the police is taking a look at the lower level and actually making a series of kind of narrower windows. And we put a kind of wood paneling in here. It's synthetic wood or cement that looks like wood, but then putting in darker glass because, you know, they were saying that the high school, you walk up to it and, you know, it's kind of wide open, and you can see right into the cafeteria. So there's a lot of subtle things that are in this, but, you know, we've taken as much input as we can and kind of worked it into the design.
So these sort of louvers that are on that south side on the upper floors, is that, maybe John can answer this, is that akin to what you see in the science building at the university on that south face where you've got?
Yeah, I don't know if they'll be that pronounced, but it's the same.
But it's the same effect to mitigate the overhead sun in the summer or spring. It's, you don't want that getting into the building. But you get the solar gain when the sun's at a steeper angle.
You block it when the sun's high in the summer, and in the winter it's lower, and you can actually get the sun into the building, which is nice.
Is the basketball court gonna be subsidized cost?
The basketball, yes. The gym is, there's, I think there's, the bleachers were...
So the MSBA allows a gym 6,000 square feet. I think this gym is 6,900 square feet. So they're gonna subsidize 6,000 square feet of it. The area where the bleachers are, they're not subsidizing that.
So that's, I think that's it. I'm happy to come back to any of those slides at any point tonight.
So just some of the costs, as I said, we've been working on costs throughout this. At the end of schematic design, ourselves as owners, project manager, and Gene as the designer, we did two independent cost estimates. After they were done, we brought the cost estimators together, went through those in a process that's called a reconciliation. We went through each division, each discipline of the building, each section of the building to make sure that the same assumptions were made, the same allowances were carried, and that the two estimators agreed on what the costs for this building were. So we took that, we inputted into our overall project budget. This is what I'm showing you now. I'll go through it. The feasibility study was $800,000. The town has already appropriated that. That's what was used to fund this phase of the design. The construction budget, which includes your demo, the existing building foundation, the shell interiors, MEPs, fixtures, and all your site work, is just under $64.7 million. Then what's known as soft costs makes up the bulk of the rest of that. That's all your administration costs, your OPM fees, your design fees, FFNEs, your furniture fixtures, equipment, and then other miscellaneous costs that we see in these projects, legal services, printing, advertising, utility costs, or the cost to bring in your power, your fiber, your gas, your water, any permitting costs. That would be any permitting cost for planning department or planning board or conservation, moving costs to bring the kids back to this location, and then some inspections that we're required to do for the building code, concrete inspections, soil inspections, masonry, structural steel inspections. So that's 11.38 million. And then we carry contingencies for any unforeseen that may come up during the course of the project. We have two contingencies. One is known as the owner's contingency, the other is known as the construction contingency. So our contingencies are just over 3.7 million, which brings us to a total project budget of $80 million and $600,000.
Excuse me, the contingency?
Yep.
Is that percentage that you're using, an average that you're seeing in construction costs? Because to me, it seems relatively low.
It is. So for new construction, we carry about 5% of the construction value. And then I think for the owner's contingency, I think we had about $400,000 for that. So that's what we see. We see for new construction, that 5%. If it was renovation, we would carry a higher percent for that.
Thank you. Do you have a detailed list of the ineligible costs for the...
I can certainly get you that. We presented it at a building committee meeting a couple of months ago, so I can send you that presentation.
But is it accurate or is it examples? I mean, your numbers here are fairly accurate.
Right.
So I'm assuming calculating down to 41.97%.
That's accurate. So every town has got a base reimbursement rate. That's based on a calculation number by the Department of Revenue. So your base rate was 55.63. That's established. We can't change that. It's not negotiable. On to that, there are some incentives that the MSBA offers. They offer up to 2% for your maintenance program. They look at your other schools. They're maintained. How you propose to maintain the new school. I would say that you guys got 1.65% out of the 2%, which is quite high for that. It's usually around 1.1 and 1/4. So you got quite a high reimbursement for that. And then the other one is a 2% incentive to meet the LEED standards. LEED is energy, I'm sorry, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. That was a sustainability thing we talked about at the start of it. If we get LEED certified, which is the lowest level of LEED, they're certified silver, gold, and platinum. If we're certified and we exceed the energy code by 20%, we'll get an extra 2%. So that brings us up to the 59.
Shane, just to clarify Mr. Wood's question, because that was all great, but the construction cost is capped at $333 per square foot. That's what they're gonna reimburse you?
Correct.
59.28% on, right?
Of eligible.
Right. Well, the eligible is 333, right?
Right.
Yeah. So what's the construction cost per square foot that this project assumes?
We're at about $495, I think, per square foot.
So all $160 beyond that is not reimbursable?
Correct.
Which is what helps bring 59 down to 41, 42 effectively. And so just like when the state says, we'll give you 100% for transportation for regional schools, they don't.
Right. Yeah. So just going down to that, so that's how they come up the reimbursable, just following on for that. So some of the costs that are not eligible are any legal fees, advertising, printing, moving costs, permits, or utility costs. So those are categorically not reimbursable. As Tim just mentioned, there are other reimbursable costs, but they're capped. Those are the same cap costs across the state in all town, cities, and regional school districts, $333 per square foot. The MSBA reviews that every year. It's set at the start of the year. So because we're going to the board in August, that's what it is for this year. That's what will be locked in at 333. Our furniture fixtures and equipment is capped at 2,400 per student. That's been the same at MSBA, I believe since MSBA reformed in 2004. I've never seen that change. I think we're carrying about $2,900 per student. You usually don't meet that 24, but they'll reimburse up to 24. And then site costs are capped at 8% of the construction cost. Again, that's the same across the board for all schools, across the Commonwealth. And that's just, towns don't put in swimming pools, put in stadiums, put in, you know, bleachers, that sort of thing. It's capped, so it's a living playing field. If towns want to do that, they pay for that themselves.
So if I recall, the road through the senior center is not eligible for reimbursement because it exceeds that percentage rate?
Well, they take the whole site cost and say, right, your site cost is $10 million, you know, we're reimbursing six of it. They don't distinguish that. We're not doing that part. They take an overall look at it.
Shane, could I ask you to explain the idea?
John, could you come to the mic so people can hear?
Could you maybe elaborate on the whole concept of the reimbursement rate? That's not a target, like the $333 a square foot is not what the school building authority thinks you can build a school for. It's just a way for them to manage how much they're gonna participate. But I don't know if everybody understands that, but maybe you could just explain that if...
Yes, so it's...
It's not like we're building, you know, a really expensive school and we're way over their budget. You know, it's an incentive to help the communities, you know, build that school. So maybe you could explain that.
Yeah, so as I said, MSBA has a certain pot of money that they can allocate to schools every year who submit the statement of interest. They've worked it out that that's the fairest reimbursable to give, to get the most schools that they can into it, to build the schools that will meet their requirements, which are educationally appropriate, sustainable, and the third one, educationally appropriate, sustainable, and cost-effective schools, 330 square foot. That's the same whether you're in Boston, whether you're in Bridgewater, whether you're in central mass or western mass. So building costs are different depending on where you are in the state. And that's what the MSBA have come up with as a fair reimbursement rate on the construction portion of the project for all schools throughout the state.
And you said for the project, you're calculating at 4 something?
495, I believe.
495 a square foot. Okay. Now, how certain is that? Because you haven't, I remember the meeting where, and John, I think you were there, and there were a couple people that said, you know, there are standard tools, and you go by square footage, and there's so much concrete, steel, glass, whatever, and you can calculate that. But how certain is that 495 figure as we go into actually getting bids and construction costs?
So we're pretty certain. We estimated that, as I said, we had two estimators that estimated it. They came together. We spent, you know, seven, eight hours in our office going through every page, every line, to make sure that they both agree that that was an appropriate value to put on the school. We're still at schematic stage, moving forward into the next phases, which are design development, 60% construction documents and 90% construction documents. We'll do two estimates at each stage then and reconcile again. So we'll track those costs right through up until we bid the project. So there'll be cost checks.
I'm sorry. As part of that reconciliation, you know, there's two parts of it. There's the quantities that have been estimated, whether it's by square foot or unit cost. So the two independent estimators came to an agreement on that, and then the costs they were carrying for each one of those items. So a few of the members of the committee, including myself, attended one of the sessions. And as part of my profession, I participated on the other side of the fence on those. And it's a very thorough process that they undertook. I have a, you know, high confidence in the people that did the estimate and validated all the numbers and where they were apart. They figured out where they were apart, and on some of them, they agreed to come together, and some of them, they held their ground. But, you know, overall, that's where the cost came in. And it is schematic design. And it is schematic design. The contingency's supposed to help us cover that, the fact that we're still at schematic. And then I guess it passed muster with the School Building Authority, who looks at these estimates all the time.
So, you know, we compared it to other school projects. Elementary schools are the same size and scale as this, and it's around that. They're pricing in around, you know, four sixty to five fifteen. So we're right in the middle of what school projects are coming in, are projected out to when we think we're going to bid this project. So going back to the reimbursement, so when we looked at the eligible costs, so we just go back, we calculate that our effective rate will be about forty-one point nine seven percent. We anticipate a reimbursement of around thirty-three point eight million, leaving the anticipated town share at forty-six, seven, seven, one, eight, eight, seven. That number does include the eight hundred that's already been appropriated. So obviously, you can take that out of what we would need to fund going forward with the project.
Was that reimbursed too, the eight hundred? I mean, I know a portion was supposed to be when we voted on it.
Correct, yes. That was reimbursed. I don't have the numbers to date, but I think we've gotten about three hundred thousand back from MSBA to date. So just the next page then, just talk about some of the policy that the MSBA have for project approval. To qualify, you have to follow the MSBA's statute and regulations, which we have been. The schematic design that we sent into MSBA in July tenth of this year, that will inform the basis of the scope, the schedule, and the total grant that we'll get from them. That's what we discussed when we met with the MSBA staff last week. And then in order for the MSBA to enter into a project scope and budget agreement with the district, the district must submit the schematic design, which we have, prior to the MSBA board meeting. We'll receive approval from the MSBA board, hopefully on August twenty-eighth, and then we'll have to sign three copies of this project scope and budget agreement and send those back to MSBA. Within a hundred and twenty days of that MSBA board meeting, the town has to vote to appropriate the funding for the project. And upon that approval from the town, we'll sign what's called a project funding agreement. Really, the only difference between the project scope and budget agreement is that sets out that the MSBA cell say, should your town vote to approve the project, we will enter into a project funding agreement. Once the town votes to approve it, then we get the formal project funding agreement, and that locks MSBA into reimbursing the town that thirty-three million or so dollars. What happens if we don't vote for the project? As I said at the beginning, there's about eighty to a hundred schools submit statement of interest every year, only about fifteen districts are brought into that every year. So there isn't enough money to go around. If the town doesn't vote to approve this project, it's likely MSBA will pull us out of their core program and won't move forward with the project or with any more reimbursement to the town. The town risks losing that reimbursement of thirty-three point eight million dollars. If the town wishes, they can resubmit to the MSBA, but they'll have to go back to the start, submit that statement of interest again. As I saw at the start of the presentation, it takes about twelve to fourteen months to get that through, and there's no guarantee that you would be accepted back into the program. If you were, costs are likely to have gone up. Right now, we're at about four to six percent. I think that's four point four two is low. But we're certainly at four to six percent escalation every year for construction projects. This will push us out at least three years, I would think, to get to this point again. So obviously, costs will grow up between now and then. I would say as well, if you are accepted back into the program with MSBA, they will make you do another feasibility and schematic design. They will not reimburse that. So the eight hundred thousand dollars you spent at this phase is being reimbursed. That would not be reimbursed if we were allowed back in at some time in the future. And then just finally, schedule, it's a little hard to see up there. So the MSBA local approvals, we're here in August. We hope to have those by sometime in October, the middle to end of October. That will allow us to move straight into the detailed design. As I said, the first phase of that is design development. We have about four months to do that. We'll submit that to MSBA again. They'll review it. We'll do those cost-checked estimates. If everything is in line, we'll continue into construction documents. That's about six months. Two phases of that, there's sixty percent construction documents, ninety percent construction documents. Again, we'll do cost estimates, cost checks at both those stages. And then after ninety percent of MSBA approves it, we'll move into the bidding and award phase, which will take about two months. In terms of construction, we looked at a couple of different schedules. This is the one that we're leaning towards now. We've presented this to the building committee. We would like to demolish the existing building prior to bidding the construction of the new building. We think there's advantages to that in that a lot of time in those demolition projects, you can find some unknowns. You can find something in the building you didn't expect to see there. There might be some asbestos, although we don't expect it in this building. But there might be something else we find in there that can lead to delays, lead to change orders and needing to access that contingency. I think if we do that before we bid the general contract, we can give the contractor a clean sight. He comes in, he can start construction immediately, and it's eliminating a risk during the demos part of the construction. If we did that, we would award construction probably in November of two thousand and twenty. Looking at about a twenty-month schedule, brings us out to June, couple of months then to furnish the buildings, and we would be ready to move students in in September of two thousand and twenty-two. That's it. Questions?
So, you're well...
Questions.
Yeah, a question. So you're well beyond the other options. But did you get into any level of this detail in, like, reuse of the current building? It was about a year ago, I asked you about the current building. You said the bones were good.
Yes.
So in terms of a renovation option, did you get into any sort of level of figuring out if you could cluster pre-K in first and second, and if you could make changes for security and other things for a total cost, and what the percentage of that total cost might be for reimbursement? Although you didn't submit that for...
So we did that at a conceptual level as part of the second submission to MSBA, which was the preferred schematic. We had looked at, I think, nine or eleven options at that time. We looked at a basic renovation of that existing building, just to open it again. We looked at two extensive renovations of that building, and then we looked at six new construction options. So we looked at those at a conceptual level. At the end of that preferred schematic stage, that's when we had to pick one, where the building committee picked the C six one option, submitted that, went to the MSBA board, and they approved that for schematic design. So we only carried that one option through schematic design.
I just, I wanted to jump in because we had studied the building after the February twenty fifteen roof collapse, which was separate from this project. But the only bones at this point that are good on the building are the kind of the foundations and the structural steel, because the steel goes up to about the gutter level, and then everything above that is wood trusses. And so those trusses have a myriad of defects. And so if you chose to make use of that building, the roof's got to come off, and you have to put a new structural system on the roof, which you can do. The other thing that was a problem with that building was air quality. And, you know, the source of that was not water coming up from the ground. There's a lot of moisture in the building. The source of it was actually water that was trapped behind the brick, and it was getting sucked into the building. So when I say, you know, the structural steel frame is fine, but if you want to use that building again, you're going to have to peel off, you know, the entire exterior skin of the building and rebuild it.
So, Gene, can I simplify it for people?
Sure.
Basically, we have to get rid of the roof.
Yes.
I mean, that's just a done deal.
And the outside skin.
And then the walls, because of the vapor barrier, et cetera, issues, really have to go too. So if you were looking to quote-unquote "fix" the building, you'd essentially just tear it down to the steel beams and then build a new building around it, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And then to meet the educational program, we did look at additions to that building and kind of reconfiguring it for security and the educational program. So the building, because you have to work around what's there, you can't make what's there more efficient than it is, you know, the building ends up being bigger. And it also really didn't score as high. We did as best we could as far as laying out the building with all those features that we went through on the new building. And in the end, the new, you know, they were almost the same price, and the new building was just so much more effective educationally, and on the site. So that's why.
And there were three proposals of renovation and/or new construction proposed to the building committee several months ago, correct? There were three options.
Yeah, multiple iterations.
And this was the proposal that the building committee voted for? Like eleven to one or almost unanimous, right? To go forward with new construction?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. This one scored the highest when we looked at all the educational, all the community, all the security, all the various criteria. We looked at probably fifty different criteria and ranked things. And as I said, it, in the end, addressed the site the best, and it was, you know, the value was there as far as cost effectiveness.
I just wanted to add to your point, Councilor Gallagher, that there's been hundreds of hours spent looking at this project and determining what is the best interest. And all the research that's been done and the design that's been done, this is the plan that we should be supporting as a council moving forward.
Why weren't there solar panels put on? I know that one of the presentations said solar-ready, but if it's a LEED's building, wouldn't you want to also extend and go to solar?
You can put solar on the building. You can put it in the parking lot with canopies. There's a lot of different ways to do it. We worked with the Energy Committee Carlton in town. Grants are just not available, so they become, it becomes very expensive to put it on, and the payback, I guess the committee felt the payback just wasn't there. It's a lot of upfront costs. If there are grants in the future that become available, and it becomes more cost-effective to put panels on the building, then the building is quote-unquote "solar-ready." The roof can support them, and there'd be electric conduits down to the electric room in the basement. So that's what the committee decided to do.
Right. And part of that too was when we looked at the capacity on the building for solar panels, it didn't generate a lot of power for the building. If you wanted to make that a net zero building, you would have had to put canopies all over the parking and other areas of the site. So I think, yeah, it was cost prohibitive at that time. We estimated about three million dollars to just put on the building, not the canopies. So for three million dollars, you weren't getting a lot.
Would that have been an ineligible cost, a capped cost, or...
That would be an ineligible cost.
An eligible. So we would own the entire three million?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
As far as sustainability, though, the building is going to be LEED, not just certified, but LEED Silver, which is a level up. Shane had mentioned that the energy efficiency is going to beat the requirements under the energy code by over twenty percent. And the reason the town pursued that was that it ends up with two percent more reimbursement from the state on the eligible cost.
Will this, would the new building be more cheaper to run, cheaper in terms of energy costs and maintenance costs?
Yeah, it'll be cheaper on a kind of per square... Well, the problem is, yes, it'll be more efficient. It'll definitely be more efficient. The problem is, it's such a, all buildings now are bringing in so much more fresh air and either heating or cooling them. They're doing it more efficiently, but there's a lot more volume that's being brought in so that the buildings are healthy.
So it's performing better than it...
Yes.
Right, in terms of indoor air quality.
Right.
And perhaps you could go into some of the benefits of the, there's a whole page about community benefits, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and on that ground level and how it's isolated from other levels. So that provides an opportunity, not just for town meetings or anything else, but that could be leased to a summer program. I know the university has its Arts for Youth program, which is now housed in the high school. The high school might not be the best. It would seem like this ground floor would be ideal for that sort of programming during the summer, which would bring in, you know, public benefit, but also, I guess, a cash benefit to the towns.
Right. So there's, you know, it's clearly up to the town and the district, you know, who's in there and what programs are run. But, you know, it is set up to be segregated. It is, the building is fully air-conditioned. And so it's, I mean, as far as summer programs, you know, whether they're academic or something like that, you know, it's set up for that.
Right. Thanks.
And the gym does have bleachers, right?
Bleachers, one hundred and twenty seats in the gym. I had mentioned that the stage opens to either or. All the classrooms, so the music classrooms, yes, they're music classrooms, but any of the classrooms in the building are going to be designed. All the furniture these days is kind of like on wheels and movable, because it's just good practice so that you can move things to the side and make use, you know, reconfigure rooms for multiple uses. So even those classrooms downstairs that are, you know, labeled for music could be used for a lot of different purposes. The district also, well, they run a before and after-school program, so that's where that'll happen. You know, again, they'll be able to kind of shut off the upper two floors and run their programs, so the music classrooms can be used for, you know, academic use, and the cafeteria and the gymnasium can be used for various activities. And the parents can pick up and drop off using that bus loop. And we know that the buses and parents all come at different times, so that all works.
Any other questions? I appreciate you coming in tonight and thank you for that presentation, and we will see where it goes in a couple of months, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the town manager's report, item I. We have three things on the agenda tonight: update on the town website, condition of Haywood Street, and items for next meeting. So we'll turn it over to the town manager, who's been waiting very patiently.
I've been waiting very patiently. No, that was an important presentation. The, just want to give a quick update on the town website. I think a couple of councilors had asked about the plan for the website, asked if we could make some changes. So based on some of the comments we've gotten, and also based on our normal three-year review, I think I had mentioned that we were looking to possibly switch vendors. We have decided actually to stick with the current vendor, which is fine. But we will be doing a full site redesign beginning in March. So that's a full, you know, complete site redesign, which is accommodated under the contract with the vendor. And as part of that, I talked to our IT director. What we'll do is send out likely an electronic survey of a host of people, if not, you know, through a Facebook posting, just find out what people are looking for, what people would like to see in the website. Our ultimate goal internally is to make the town website the one-stop shop. So, you know, the councils voted money to begin a digitization process, to get all our documents, you know, convert them to an electronic format, which allow them to be very easily shared. So that is a huge project. That'll go over the next several years at least. But we want to make sure that the website is going to be a platform to accommodate and house as much of that as possible, or as much as makes sense. as much as makes sense. So we also, last time we had a small group of volunteers who were sort of beta testers on the website. We will do that again. Again, this is something that will begin in March, so we'll also do some, you know, requests for volunteers to sort of work with us on that. So that's very basically the website. I did ask Brad today, actually, if we can make changes to the homepage. He said we can, but it's essentially, you know, a static in the, for the vendor that we use. You know, we can add things, you know, we can add things that link to documents or we can add things that link to news stories. For instance, I think the triple E outbreak is on the newsflash. I think the Mitchell School tax calculator is on the newsflash. So you can click, excuse me, click on that and it'll bring you right to whatever page houses the newsflash or houses the calculator or the press release on the triple E. So, but we can't really do a whole lot of redesign. That's sort of what we're saving March to do. And his, his comment to me was, we'll be making sure that we create and reserve a space that's more easily used when the council has things like the Mitchell School. That's a big deal. So we can really push that onto the homepage. Maybe shrink down some of the pictures, which are nice, but shrink down some of the pictures and give us more space to actually put, you know, critical news items right on the homepage. So that's, that's sort of just the basic outline on the town website, so I don't know if anybody has any questions about that.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood. I did, because I asked for this item to be on the topic. I think, again, just reiterating as you go into a design mode, we've got important documents out there like the administrative code, the zoning code, and other items like that, in addition to the newsflashes and whatever, that need to be more readily accessible by the general population. It's, it's, even when you know what you're looking for is difficult to find and it often comes up with a, just a document number and then you have to scan the document as opposed to, excuse me. When I was doing research on the administrative code, I looked at probably 100 municipalities and many of those using some vendors. You know, it's right there as a one-click into the administrative code, for example, and then you can browse by subject and you can, you know, basically click on a table contents to get to the area you want, not download a PDF and kind of search it yourself, which is the way our zoning ordinances are set up on the website currently. So I think we should just make it more user-friendly with the, with all those documents that, like those I said, plus anything else that we come up with, agendas or anything like that.
That, no, those points very well taken. But I do, you did remind me, obviously here is the homepage for the town's website, but I do want to just show people because this is, I know a lot of people go in looking for the admin code, the administrative code, and it actually is a quick link on the homepage and we can rename it or we can make it more descriptive, but it's actually Bridgewater Town Code brings you up the entire code, which includes the charter, the admin code, general ordinances, and will include zoning ordinances as soon as we get through that process that we're going through now. You can, for instance, oh, I'll go right, so you can click the table of contents and get right to the admin code there. But I know that, I think there are a lot of people confused, by the way, it's presented as Bridgewater Town Code under the quick link, so.
But you can't go any deeper than just clicking to get to the admin code? Like, say I wanted to know, like, what's the noise ordinance?
Well, you could, no, you could go into the town code and it does include, okay, so the charter, it includes Part II, the administrative code, which council knows well. So the council includes the council's administrative policies and procedures. Can you get beyond that? And there are your general ordinances. So if you want to, what was your specific?
Noise ordinance.
We don't have one, so that'll be hard to find, but.
Nice try.
I think we have a public nuisance ordinance.
We do.
That relates to noise.
And admittedly.
But we are every couple of weeks.
Admittedly, it's, it's, we tried to lay it out, we took the, as you recall, we took the old bylaw, the old bylaws, converted them into ordinances and then tried to put them in some kind of alphabetical order. And so, you know, you can, you can go through it that way.
To Mr. Wood's point, it's just, I don't want to spend five minutes scrolling through.
Cumbersome. Cumbersome. So anyway, I did, I did want to just show you that.
Okay, thank you.
But those points are very well taken and those are things we've talked about internally as well in prep.
I think, I think to Tim's point also, I mean, just looking at there, obviously, I probably spend more time on my phone than the PC and it looks different on the PC, granted. But even when I get into that code, if I'm looking for the noise ordinances, I don't need 100 pages of committee reports or committees and, you know, charter pages and all the other stuff leading up to what are the laws of Bridgewater?
So it'd be better, be better to break it out into the basic components, the different parts of the code.
Right.
Just click on it if you're looking for general ordinances, just click on it if you're looking for zoning ordinances or what have you. That's a good point.
You all set with that, Bill?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have conditions of Haywood Street. Councilor Wood, how's everything on Haywood Street?
Well, before the Town Manager talks about Haywood Street, I'd like to read, if you indulge me for two minutes, a letter from a neighbor of mine, so you know it's not me.
You wrote a letter?
I was expecting another, she had a conflict tonight, she couldn't be here, she's going to speak on behalf, I asked her to send this, and another neighbor was going to send that and forward that on to the Town Manager. And this is from Janice Romano at 280 Haywood Street. And she says, "Dear Mr. Wood, I'm writing to you in hopes that you can help us with the situation in town. I live at 280 Haywood Street. A project involving updating our water pipes has been done recently. Throughout the process, I tried to be patient, constantly digging, daily digging, and patchwork paving each night tested my patience daily. The wear and tear on my five vehicles has been tremendous. I feel the company that was hired did a careless job at the paving daily as well as at the end when we were left to finagle through weeks after. I wrote to the company in an email on May 27th in regards to the safety issue over the Memorial Day weekend. I did hope that at the end of the project, they would come back and smooth over the dips and uneven pavement, thinking that it would not be left in such bad condition. My street is a cut-through street and used by many Bridgewater residents. The uneven pavement is so hard on cars that anyone who is not familiar with the holes and pits that line the entire street is bound for damage to their tires. I'm inserting several pictures, which were hard to print, but they're here. I took a current uneven pavement and a gaping hole at the end of Pheasant Lane. I do not see how we can live with this for a year while the ground settles. I feel the job was done without any care whatsoever to the residents and their vehicles. I do not see how the street in this condition could withstand a snowstorm and street plowing. The asphalt would be immediately picked up by the plow. Frost heaves are a major problem in this, in the winter in Old House Number side of Haywood Street, and this is also a potential problem for the upcoming winter. This is unacceptable travel conditions for any street in Bridgewater. I do not feel the lowest bidder for a job for which I'm assuming this was, is the best choice. Bridgewater needs to choose more wisely for the safety of residents. Unfortunately, this is the first time we've encountered shabby work and left the deal with a lack of accountability." I'm hoping, I'm writing in hopes that this company comes back and smoothes over the careless roadwork, which has been done and needs to be addressed immediately. Signed, Janice Romano. And I'll add to that, because I've been walking, and my wife walks, other people walk on the street, in particular like Pole 27, which is at the big curve near the, near the town river. The pavement has settled so much that there's about a two-inch ridge now, and so anyone that's going along there has to contend with the ridge and the sidewalk, which is immediately adjacent to the road, and it, and it becomes a, just drive it, you'll understand. There's been several accidents on it. Several areas have settled to where there are now almost potholes that were patched. And as Janice says, it can only get worse from here. I understand waiting for it to settle is benefit to, you know, paving a year later, but there are some major holes still on the road, even after the company left.
So the good news is the Water and Sewer Superintendent absolutely understands and agrees and has ordered the contractor back before we make payment on the work that was done. So that is, weather permitting, will be happening next week. And overlay on a good chunk of it and then fixing the potholes or the patches or the bad spots. I do want to let people know that that is, it is frustrating when a road gets completely rebuilt, such as Hayward. Obviously, water pipes were done, then we realized that a good chunk of the drainage had to be done, so it was more intrusive than, than would normally be number one, which really essentially means that there's more heaving and settling over time. But once, once that crew comes in and tries to patch and overlay what's there, if, hopefully that will get us through the winter. The principle, as you point out, being that the traffic, you know, you can do all the vibration in the world when you're building or refilling the holes that you've excavated, and that's not nearly as good as just time and traffic. We'll do a much better job of compressing and settling the street in order to come back and then repave. So we do wait a period of time. It's much better to wait a period of time to do the final reconstruction of the road, but we're absolutely in agreement that that's, the way it is now, wouldn't survive the winter. So, so that is, as I say, if weather permits, that'll get attention next week. And I just want to mention the low bidder issue. You know, I do get that. This particular contract, to my knowledge, has done other good work in Bridgewater, so I'm not, not willing to denigrate the contractor at this point, but, but we are obligated, I mean, procurement requires that we take the low bid. However, these contractors have all gone through a pre-qualification process, which involves mass DOT. We're part of a buying group, so when these folks bid on these projects, they're bidding for a multitude of towns. And so we have that available to us. It is lower cost. It's our responsibility to make sure that we get the quality out of the work. So we know that the utilities were well-done, water and drainage, so we're quite happy with that, but the paving, certainly, the patch paving needs to be, needs to be fixed and we know that.
Anything else regarding Haywood Street? We have items for next meeting. Does anybody have any items you want to let the Town Manager know you'd like to hear about on September 3rd, which is almost a month away?
That's fine. I'm sure a lot of people who are on the Bridgewater Residents' Facebook page are seeing that some of my constituents in the area, not on Haywood Street, but further out, are complaining about discolored water. Some attributed to this, to a project on Wall Street. I'm not sure it's that, but there's other people also complaining about that. So maybe we can collect information on that and talk about that next time.
Okay, water discoloration. And, okay, you can contact Ann between now and our next, before the agenda goes out, and let her know through the Town Manager what you would like to have on the agenda for him to talk about, or you can make an appointment and sit down and talk to him.
Perhaps, anytime.
Anytime.
And just so people know, and I know this is a, sort of an awkward process so far, so we'll try to make it a little easier, but I certainly will have, you know, beginning of September, everybody's coming back to work and school, so I'll have a pretty robust number of items to discuss.
Sure.
Although your council clerk probably doesn't want me to say that right now.
We can, we can call a meeting for two weeks if you want. Nobody's like. Discussion items, we have standing discussion item, Mitchell School building update. Do we want to?
Can I suggest we just let that move on?
Go on, I agree, I agree with that.
We had a nice one.
Let's go on to Rainbow's End. This was put on for discussion by Councilor Chase. I know there's been a lot of discussion about it lately.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. For anyone who may not know the very recent history, I think sometime around the Fourth of July holiday, the Rainbow's End playground was dismantled. And the debris from that remains on the site in the form of the many wooden pilings that formerly comprised the playground structures. I had learned of that just literally on my way to our last council meeting in July, and that was when I had asked to have the item put on the agenda for tonight as a component of the Town Manager's Report. I had later thought about it and I thought, well, maybe it ought to be a discussion item, just to kind of break it up from the Town Manager's Report and also to, to the extent any of my colleagues feel appropriate, provide a bit of a wider forum for discussion on this issue. That said, I think that a lot of the, a lot of the answers, if you will, are what I would hope that Mr. Dutton might be able to provide to us. And just by way of background, he and I did have a discussion some few weeks ago on the topic in general, and I received information from him and some, you know, some background of which I wasn't aware. I've also been, as you might imagine, in touch with any number of residents, particularly of my district, but not exclusively, who had concerns or just strong feelings about the matter of the dissolution of that playground site. I think what, what I might suggest, if, with your permission, Mr. President, and if Mr. Dutton feels appropriate, I could ask him for his comments just as to, give us an update as to what he understands has taken place and provide just a little background and perhaps at that point, I might have questions. I suspect I will, and perhaps some of you will as well.
Sure.
So very quickly, I'll give you just a little bit of background, and councilors may know some of this, and I'll, for public benefit, I'll let you know. So I think back prior, I believe prior to 2005, the town received a report from BSU professor who had done some work, testing work as part of a sabbatical or a part of a class research project, had gotten some results back that there were high levels of arsenic and chromium, I think, is the chemical. In any case, I think that started a bit of a debate about Rainbow's End back then, quite a while ago, obviously. That debate continued up until 10 years later, in 2015. And in 2015, the Board of Health, which had a chemical engineer as a member at the time, asked me to close Rainbow's End and, well, they requested the dismantling of Rainbow's End based upon the chemical issues that had been brought to light some 10 years prior. The awkward piece of Rainbow's End, and I think I've mentioned this through the council over the last few months. over the last few months, past year probably, is that the property, the control of that piece of property is a matter of debate. And it's a matter of debate, legal debate, and it probably is not something that could be solved without quite a long, protracted process. So, that has essentially got us up to the recent history or the recent time. And I think the council had asked me to resolve the Rainbow's End issue as expeditiously as possible without expending a lot of money. So, fortunately, we were able to do that. I gathered together the DOC, Bridgewater Youth Soccer, and obviously, me. And DOC was willing to provide the demolition service. Bridgewater Youth Soccer was happy to see that facility go. It was not something that they allowed or they encouraged their families to go use just because of what they had understood the conditions to be, as well as some other issues. So, that, you know, with the DOC's commitment and relieving essentially the town, you know, as possibly one of the controlling interests in the property from significant financial liability, the DOC went ahead and did the demo. We have committed to doing, as the Board of Health requested back in 2015, or ordered back in 2015, we've committed to doing the testing on the remaining soils. Once the debris is out, we will do that. And if there is remediation somehow required there, then we're going to have to have a discussion with the DOC on how to move forward on that. So, that's, I'm probably missing some of the salient points. But I, you know, you heard from Mr. Moore earlier in the evening, and he's absolutely right. I mean, I don't think the council, nor I, lose sight of the fact that there were, you know, hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that built that facility. So, that's not, you know, it's an unfortunate culmination of many years of, quite honestly, neglect. But also, you know, it's a culmination of, a sad culmination of a lot of the efforts that volunteers went into to build that facility. So, and he's absolutely right. You know, we have Marathon Park, which is a relatively new facility. We do, we are making some improvements there, and I think some of the visuals there are just temporary decommissioning of some of the equipment. We're waiting for pieces and parts to come in. So, but Jenny Leonard Park, David mentioned, is a, I gather, obviously, this predates a lot of us, was a town facility and was allowed to simply, you know, essentially rot. But it's, you know, we've graciously accepted private donations and private efforts to provide us some, you know, beautiful facilities over the course of years. And the town, you know, for a variety of reasons, hasn't been able to fund the maintenance and upkeep. And so, obviously, what I've said is I'm hesitant to improve a facility or build a facility unless we know that, over the long term, we can provide the funding to maintain and keep those facilities in the way that they should be kept. But that's, sort of straying off subject, but that's essentially the history in a very small nutshell of Rainbow's End, or at least my understanding of it.
If I may, I think that one of the concerns of the people who have, with whom I've spoken is that, for the most part, I think no one in the public felt that there was any notice of the impending destruction of the site and that there was just no public forum for their input on that. And I think for that reason, it's, it remains a topic of some sensitivity, certainly as we learned from Mr. Moore tonight and from others. I think one of the other issues that was presented to me, at least, I think is that there's a belief that at some point, that's hard to pinpoint, but at some point in time, effectively, the oversight, shall we say, of the site was said to be relinquished to the town and not by the, you know, the various committee and hundreds of volunteers who had constructed the site. And in fact, there's one individual who informed me that, following that, at that point at which the town was believed to have taken on some responsibility for maintenance and upkeep, that no further permission was granted by the town to any of the volunteer staff to go in and, you know, take up maintenance on their own. So, there were volunteer efforts to maintain the site. But in fact, as it was put to me, was that permission to do that on the site was denied. Now, I'm not sure where that falls in the timeline, if it was so recent as any of the points at which closure had been ordered by the town or not. But again, I think that's a point of contention that I think is, you know, is not sitting well with some folks. And it was certainly news to me. I know that certainly in having spoken with you previously about this, and some of the comments that were made here in the council, I think last November, when we had a brief discussion about the playground, that one of the main concerns was really in the manner of public safety. And I can understand that, both in terms of the potential contamination, nothing to be taken lightly about that certainly, but also just the general disrepair of the structures that could likely pose some risk of harm to individuals. I know at one point, there was some concern expressed by the police chief just as to the general site at which this location exists, just because it tended to be very closed off from the view of Flag Street. So, there were a number of concerns and, you know, in that general basket of public safety issues. I think I'm left to wonder, you know, we have a public safety committee of the council, and nothing, to my knowledge, at any point ever, you know, percolated up to that level that it was thought necessary to seek any advice and counsel from the public safety committee. I would think that would be an appropriate venue to discuss any of those issues. It wasn't done. Now, you know, we're looking at this from the perspective as a postmortem. It's in the past now. But I think that Mr. Moore raises a very significant point when he speaks about other areas in town, other venues, if you will. And he speaks about the Marathon Park, for example. It just seems to me that if, in fact, the town did assume any degree of responsibility, you know, for the upkeep, it seems to me that the town has let folks down in, you know, in observing that responsibility. And again, I think that, you know, if it were a significant public safety concern, I don't think we really addressed that appropriately. I noted the fact that in the previous comprehensive master plan, which I think is either 2002, 2003, obviously, it's a very dated document, but it does specifically provide, in the Parks and Recreation Commission mandate, if you will, it does specify Rainbow's End Playground as a site under their auspices. So, which again, brings me to, you know, at what point and for what reason did the town seemingly drop the ball on this? I don't know if that's anything you care to comment on or...
I don't think that we, I don't think we ordered anything to be torn down. I think that the issue, the issue was addressed to DOC.
Right.
They took it upon themselves. It is their land.
Right.
So, I think that whether that was contaminated to the level that it needed to be torn down is one issue. Whether it was in disrepair where it needed to be torn down, regardless of whether it was contaminated or not. But the bottom line is, it's gone, it's down. And now, there's the issue of whether the soil is not good enough to do anything. So, I guess my question to the town manager would be is, what authority do we have to go in to test the soil if it's not our land? I mean, do you have to get permission or we can just do that?
I think we have, you know, among the three groups, we've committed to doing that. You know, again, you know, from a legal perspective, I defer to the town attorney on that. But I think, you know, we have agreement from the DOC that we would come in and do that, so...
But it's not roped off. It's not, there's no caution tape around it, right? People want to go in, put a lawn chair there, they can sit there, right?
Correct. We, back in 2015, we closed the facility, we put up signs. Unfortunately, we put up signs repeatedly, and they were torn down. So, eventually, at some point, we, I think it was on the website, but we didn't, we didn't try to go and, you know, put up signs repeatedly and repeatedly, so...
Okay, so here's what I think we need to do. And number one is, work on getting the soil tested. And again, let's have a timeline. Let's just not say it in August, and then we come back in May and say, well, weren't we going to test that? Let's, if that's the next course, which is what you had said, let's get it tested, whether it's our responsibility, whether it's the DOC's responsibility, and whether we can do it or can't do it. And then, maybe somebody should put forth an order to put on the agenda for discussion to rebuild, if that's what we want to do as a council. Is that what the people want, another playground there? Let's rebuild it through the capital plan. I mean, and through the capital budget. We've been very good at saving money. So, maybe we can build that as a town.
Actually, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Through you to the town manager, have you gotten any indication from the DOC of what they're willing to allow us to do or not to do?
That's a great question. I think the DOC, in my experience, has been quite flexible. So, if the council chose to try to make an effort to rebuild something on that same site or similar site, they would enter, my guess is that they would entertain that notion. But we haven't, we haven't broached that. But I would caution that, you know, before, I would recommend going that route, we need to make sure that we very clearly understand who controls that property.
Because I guess the point, my point of the matter is, we all agree that something needs to get done after the testing to make sure it's not contaminated. But let's have an educated decision on that with the understanding and the guidelines that the ultimate authority that owns the land is in fact going to allow us to do it. It could be a new park, it could be, you know, a rebuild. I'm not advocating anything outside of the fact that I would rather actually give people choices of what to do and let the public decide instead of just giving them one choice if, in fact, the Department of Correction would give us some flexibility to do some other things that would benefit the community. That's, that would be my recommendation from there.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you. So, I know there was an agreement at some point with DOC and Soccer Association, probably tied to the thousand-bed expansion years ago. But I would think that, you know, that would be the first thing to work out legally. And it sounds like all three parties are amenable to some sort of an agreement, right? So, regardless of what was agreed to in the past, create a new agreement so that the spot is, has no doubt about who controls it. But I'm listening to some of her comments here, and everybody needs to go back into the admin code, right? So, the admin code actually has a committee, a commission, commission committee responsible for this activity, and it's Parks and Rec. We specifically expanded the Recreation Committee to be Parks and Rec, to take on a lot of other elements that weren't being done in the town. And that's Park Stewards, that's oversight of the golf course as a replacement for the Golf Commission. And that also includes the playground and other, you know, other type of venues like that. And we need to, we need to encourage that for two reasons. One is, community participation in committees is extremely important. It allows the community to participate. It's not just a 501(c)(3) that has, you know, a couple of people, but it allows the whole neighborhood to participate. And it encourages the committee responsible for Parks and Rec to act as Parks and Rec. And I know they are, because I think I know everybody on that group. They want pickleball cars, courts down at the senior center. And the road that the school is talking about is holding up that concept, right? The other thing that we can do at this level is, we need to fund our Parks and Recs so that when they decide that they want to do a playground or that they want to maintain a playground, that they have the budget behind that dedication. So that, I know there's a fund behind Marathon Park, but there has to be active participation in monitoring and managing the maintenance of these facilities. And it's not just one, it's many. So, we have, I think it's five different parklands at this point that people could walk on. There's at least one playground, other areas. We're also talking about management of Legion Field activity and things like that. So, it's not just capital planning, but it's also staff support, expertise support, like we talked about a couple of months ago with the Park Stewart, and that sort of support. So, I'd like to see the council take up those avenues in addition to specifically trying to, you know, find, you know, ways to come up with that. And I will also, as a last comment, talk about, what is it, Jenny Leonard?
Lynn.
Leonard?
Leonard, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. They're not young, but I know a bunch of people, probably so do a couple of others in this room, who worked on that playground, similar to Rainbow's End. It was, I think it was a Lions activity plus others. And what happened immediately thereafter is that there was no maintenance, there was no thing, and there was no security. So, vandalism started almost immediately and couldn't be contained, couldn't be stopped. And so, the park didn't have a parking spot right next to it, and it was kind of over the hill and down the way. And so, it became susceptible to vandalism and that activity. So, we need to work on those things in concert with the objectives of Park and Rec and public safety altogether. So, I can send some of the people to talk to you, it's probably way beyond that. But we need oversight. It doesn't come from the council, it comes from Parks and Rec. And we need to help them with budget and oversight.
So, I'll put this, I will put this on the discussion next time as well. And hopefully, we'll have clarification on the agreement or how, and the status of testing the soil. That's the two next steps to my, is that, and the other issue too, is there was, does anybody on the council feel there's a need for a public hearing to go, to get into the devil of the details as to what happened? Or have we been satisfied with what the town manager has explained as to how we got to where we are today? Councilor Colombo?
I think it would take more than just one hearing in one night. I think perhaps we should charge the Parks and Rec mission to delve into some of these background issues. Something else they should also look at is, is this the best place for our park? And that we should take a sort of bird's eye view. And if we've got limited resources to devote to Parks and Rec, we need to look at other needs. And perhaps there's a better place to rebuild the playground. So, I think we should avoid kind of looking, kind of becoming myopic and looking at just this one site and saying, let's do this. And instead, look at the broader context, look at available funds. at available funds, look at our, you know, can we increase the budget? So, I think, I don't know how that happens if we charge, you know, I don't know, we can't formally charge, I don't think we have the authority to charge a commission to, to look into this, but we can ask them to. So, perhaps something like, I think it needs some sort of task work, task force approach to it, to kind of dig up the relevant pertinent details and look at priorities overarching.
I think, I think Councilor Colombo, Colombo has actually hit on a number of important points. I think that, you know, certainly from, from my perspective, I'm not looking at this, you know, to find fault, as it were, but I am looking at it as, you know, something of a teachable moment. I mean, you know, let's learn from the experience. And, you know, certainly as to anything that may or may not happen on that site in the future, as well as other similar sites, you know, throughout the town. And going forward for, you know, for other recreation areas that we might, we might deal with. So, I would think some further discussion is, is necessary, not necessarily from the standpoint of, you know, pounding away at, you know, beating a dead horse, as it were, you know, how did this happen? But somehow we do have to understand how it happened.
Well, I mean, and that's, and that's a good point, but, I mean, if, if it's not our intention to put another playground or, or whatever else we can put there, there, then why have the town manager go through the process of clarifying who's in control and going through the process of testing, testing the soil? Let the DOC do that, if we don't want to do anything with it.
Well, I mean...
That's the point. Why, why waste his time on that?
How do we know we don't want to do anything with it? I mean, we might as well get it done. And as long as, as long as it's clear to us that DOC is willing to let us use it within reason as we see fit.
Then we have that discussion.
Yeah, and I think also too, you can, you can do both things. You can, you know, have, have the soil tested while we're having the rec department look at alternative sites if, if the intent is to build another playground. And at the end of that process, you'll know if Rainbow Zen is still a viable site depending on what the testing comes back.
All right, so we'll have the, the town manager continue on the track that he's on, clarifying language in the agreement and the testing. And if somebody wants to sponsor an order or a resolution for next meeting, to have the rec, I think we could, we could move forward with an, an order to have the rec, to direct the town manager to work with recreation to see if that's a feasible site for a, to rebuild a playground or, or another location in the town.
Just by maybe very quickly, you know, I attempted to at least determine if there were, you know, whether there were any easy answers, you know, could I go to the town website and find minutes for Parks and Rec and do a little scrutiny? And there are in fact no publicly posted records for the Parks and Recreation Commission.
It's a department, it's not, it's...
I believe it is called the...
But there's a recreation commission.
Recreation, it's a different, there's a different committee, yes, but there's a department.
But there were no publicly posted minutes or other documents. I found that a little disconcerting, but just one final point, and just very quickly, as to what I think that the town manager should, a point he should discuss with DOC, since it's now been about a month since the, they've, you know, removed the structures, all of those timbers are in, in piles on the site. And it strikes me that, you know, we could talk, it's kind of speculative for us to talk about the soil testing, and it may or may not pose a hazard and whatnot, but I'll tell you a hazard that's really material and very tangible, and that is that if there's someone trespassing, admittedly they would be trespassing on that area, but nonetheless, you know, were some of those timbers to, you know, cascade down, I think we'd have a serious liability issue. And I think that's something that we need to determine, when are they going to remove the debris that they have caused to be now just indiscriminately piled on the site?
Are we paying for that?
I do, I do have an answer for that. They are scheduled to begin removal, I believe, Monday or Tuesday. So, it was supposed to be this, this was supposed to be last week, but that's, that's the latest I have, yeah.
Go ahead.
Just one last thing. I, I think we also, I want to point to the fact that we have, we commissioned a recreation plan not too long ago, right? So, this is another piece, you know, another document that's probably sitting on the shelf that we should all, anyone who cares about this should open it up and say, what, is there some sort of overarching, you know, plan to improve the recreational opportunities in town, and where does this fit in? So, you know, we can't, you know, people got really upset working on these plans and to see them never implemented or paid attention to, so we should, we can't forget that.
It'll be on the agenda for September 3rd. Next item, next two items should be fairly quickly. I just wanted to have a brief discussion with, with my colleagues here about the recording of meetings. I have observed over the past few months, and I just don't think it's right that we take on the responsibility of making sure a meeting that we're attending is televised. I've, I've, I've seen some of us do it. I've seen the town manager even go around and click the button to make sure a certain meeting, a subcommittee meeting of, not a subcommittee, but a committee of the council meeting is televised. So, I went on and looked in our rules and procedures, and there was one document that I saw that said that all committee meetings shall be televised. And then I was also told that what I saw was not an updated version, so that, I guess has been taken out, but I just don't think, if, and I talked to Jeff Fowler at BTV about this at great length, and he doesn't have a problem with that, but it's really not our responsibility, I don't think. If we're having a public meeting, cable is notified, if they can provide the staff to televise it live, tape it and show it later, that's fine. That's what public access is all about. Public access is in place to make sure that the public is informed about what their public servants are doing. So, for us to be taping and recording our own meetings is kind of a, it's, it's, it's not a check and balance, so to speak. So, I just will probably be proposing an ordinance to go to rules and procedures for the next meeting to clarify, should we take on the responsibility of making sure a meeting that we want, or even a meeting that we add that isn't even part of ours, part of our committees, be televised? And I don't know what your thoughts are.
So, I'll, I'll add my thoughts, although it's getting late, so I'll keep them brief. In the original structure of the rules and procedures for the council, it was that all committees would meet in the council chambers and all meetings would be recorded and televised unless there was a technical issue. And after about three months, there became a lot of technical issues on committee nights. So, that practice kind of stopped. There have been special requests to record meetings. You were at the last week's budget meeting, you know, joint meeting, and that was a request to be recorded. But, so there's, I don't think you need to spin a thing. The, the Rules and Procedures Committee have been examining the rules for a while now, and there is a draft that's pretty close to coming back to the council for other edits. The rules are treated as an ordinance, so it has to be advertised, it has to go through, you know, two-thirds vote, et cetera, to become official. So officially right now, we, we record or televise committees, subcommittees unless there's a technical issue. I think we've removed that language for that, but obviously this, this body here should be televised.
Sure.
But that doesn't, that doesn't apply to anything other than council. So, planning board or conservation or something else doesn't have to be recorded and televised. I assume they could be if they wanted to be, but our rules don't apply to, to those committees.
I'm sure we'll, we'll have that discussion when the, when the report comes back, but I, I just think that all the meetings that we have, we're required to post them in a public setting so people know that there is a meeting. And I believe cable is always aware of all the meetings that are going on in town, and they can, if they have the staff, they, they can tape it and show it later. I, I don't think that, you know, if, if I'm going to chair a meeting and say, well, I want this televised, I'm going to go in and start playing with the, the cable equipment.
It's easy, just press one.
Well, it, it, it's not, it's, it's just, it's like, it's just not good policy, in my opinion.
Right. I think the other thing too you have to take in consideration is the practicality of being able to record a meeting. If we're having a meeting in a small conference room, I don't think it's practical nor probably available to record that meeting.
Right.
So, there has to be another portion of that in regards to the facility itself and having the ability to do that, and some of it should be on an optional basis. But if you're going to start, people are going to start playing around with everything needs to be recorded.
Right.
Well, that's a whole, whole different issue, and I've heard the same things too in regards to, you know, the transparency of having everything out there. Well, we, we don't have the facilities, we don't have the manpower to do it. So, I think the way we do it now and the way we, we operate and we put things out there, I think we need to have some latitude with that.
Yeah, I'd just say that we have a section in our town council meeting where we have committee reports that if they're not televised, you can get the gist of them in a televised meeting. So, you know, if it's, there are certain meetings that it's important to televise. When it was all about the marijuana stuff, yeah, it was important for the planning board and the CDC to get it out there on tape so people could watch it when they wanted to. When it's a 15-minute meeting to talk about, you know, legislation for action that we're coming up on with budget and finance, why are we going to clog up cable's resources for that?
All right, just wanted to have a brief discussion about that. And then the next thing is, I put on the agenda is to challenge my counselors to take a bet, and Ayesha and I have made a friendly bet, because we're going to be running the Police 5K Road Race, which is September 28th.
I'll bet you I'm not running it.
So, so I challenge my colleagues and anyone out there watching to place a bet on who will win between Councillor Loesch and myself.
Is that going to be televised?
Okay.
Point of information, town attorney, can we...
However...
Don't we have to do forms and don't we have...
No, all you have to do is take a mental bet in your head, and then whatever happens, you make a donation to the Police, I think their charity this year is Vesta, Vesta Dog, vest program, right? The K9 Vest Pro, K9 Vest Program, yeah. So, just want to throw that out to, to my colleagues. The next thing, we have town manager goals from the Strategic Planning Committee. I think there's something in our packet related to that. I don't know who wants to speak on that. Do you want to speak on that?
I've, certainly, I've gone back and forth with the Strategic Planning Committee and talked to the chair, who can't be here tonight, but I believe they're satisfied. This, just to give you a framework, this, what I've tried to do is set goals that will, I'm hoping somewhat align with, with, you know, the general areas that, that I've specified where I think we need to make some improvements. So, these are more specific, task-oriented items, which is fine for this go-around because we don't have a, a master plan, which we can really grab onto and then extrapolate, you know, goals out of. But, but I think, you know, just based on our opportunity zone, areas and how we want to sort of leverage that with downtown development, obviously the fire station, getting, moving on, on resolving and finding a new location for the fire station is important. Memorial Building along the same lines that fits into some of our downtown revitalization work, we've taken the lead and, and we've seen some good development follow, but we need to see a lot more follow. So, that's sort of along the same lines. Obviously, the school district, quality of education is, I think, will be an important item that comes out of master planning process. And to that end, we need to improve the, the school district agreement, and we're in the process of, of having some negotiations about recommendations the school committee to change and update that, that regional school agreement. So, that, that is good. Mitchell School, obviously you saw quite a lengthy presentation tonight, but in the event that that does not succeed, I need to be prepared to move forward on, on an alternative plan there. Broad Street and Elm Street, again, Elm Street more geared towards economic development, making sure that that work gets done and underway and completed as expeditiously as possible. And then Broad Street, you know, we've, we've been waiting, I think as Councillor George pointed out last week, we've been waiting for the developer on a large chunk of property on, on Broad Street to bring in his proposal, which we're assured is, is, he's ready to do, but we have not seen that yet. And then also, we've pursuant to the 2014 Cecil Group Plan, Downtown Redevelopment Plan, we're digging into the traffic concerns in Central Square to make Central Square more pedestrian and, and bike-friendly again. Community and economic development drives those, those items. Obviously, we need to have a clear communication strategy with the council. You know, I, I have, have left it to a more informal basis and, but I think it probably deserves to formalize some of the, the work that we've been doing and, and give you a better communication plan on that, on that level. And then just language from, from our budget resolution for last year will continue along those lines. My guess is that some of the language in the actual budget resolution will change a little bit, but, but we still are, are committing ourselves to, to making sure that what we've done pretty well in the past, we continue to do better in the future. So, so that's just a pretty quick outline.
Are we supposed to vote on these, or is this information...
No, well, I think I, Councillor Loesch put it on as a discussion item, and if, unless there was anything...
It's a discussion item, but I have a pending, I don't even remember anymore, it's either order, ordinance, or something about having goals, and it was empty and given to the Strategic Planning. So, this needs to be filled in on that, and that needs to come back to the council, and then we can vote on.
Yeah, I mean, we brought this up to show the work that we've had, but now it needs to go through the formal process of being added to his, to the town manager's goals and objectives. But we wanted the council to see it, to make sure that everyone had line of sight, if anyone had any issues or concerns, to bring it up now before we go through the process of adding it to the order to put it on there. And the other thing too, what we, you know, what we tried to do was be fair and balanced with setting expectations that were quote unquote "in the direct control" of the town manager, and also trying to avoid things that we know the town manager wants to accomplish, but maybe out of his or her in the, in the future, direct control for various things. So, I think it, it, it was fair and unfair to the town manager position to have goals and objectives that basically said, go out and get things done. And we had no way of count, of measuring the accomplishments per se. So, I think this, this is probably as close as what we'll get to for fiscal year 2020, but then with the expectation as we go forward that, you know, these will change, but maybe adding a few things more that we can have on a, on a measurable perspective if everyone's comfortable with it as well. Because I think one of the things you don't see in here is fiscal, is actual numbers, and that was, that's a very tough thing. It, it, it's good to have in there because that's a black and white measurable, but we just didn't think we could land on something that would be acceptable to everyone involved, but with the understanding that we do need to put some things in there in the near future that are, are pretty specific that way. I don't know if I missed anything.
So, if we want to, we have a, a request, should we say it tonight or have, or send it to the committee?
I would probably say send it to the committee.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll take this.
I mean, this is the first time everyone's seen it, so I wouldn't expect everyone to come up with their, but, you know, send it to us, any recommendations.
Should we refer it back to, just letting, do we refer this back?
Sounds like this is a work and copy already.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we have everyone on board, then we'll, we'll do the formal presentation to incorporate. I think this is a first reading.
Sure.
Very good. Half reading.
Half reading.
First reading.
Okay, committee report, so there are any...
Yes.
Do you want to come in? Do you want to come in? Go ahead, Bill.
So Budget Finance last week had a, I'll characterize it as a workshop, a great workshop with the District, School District Finance Team. So the Superintendent and the Treasurer, Business Officer, the School Committee came in with several members. And then our own Finance Director, as well as one member from the, from the Finance Team Committee, who weren't specifically invited, but that's okay. The, and it was a really healthy discussion on revenue, revenue projections, and estimates and modeling and that sort of thing. We're going to, next week on Tuesday night, I'll have Ann, I'll ask Ann to post it. I can't remember what time we agreed to, it's in my notes. But the next workshop or discussion is gonna focus on expenses, expense projections and modeling and some things surrounding that. And then the third one, hopefully, we get to, is, so we did revenues, we'll do expenses, and then we'll do capital planning. Everybody should have a five-year capital plan, and we can talk about the mix on that. Again, as a workshop model, not as a, not as a, an actual order ordinance to do that. The second one is tonight, Budget and Finance met, and we talked about the, the three contracts that are on here. And although we recommend to approve, my understanding is that the Finance Committee did not have a quorum and could not move, so we won't be able to take these up tonight.
Any other committee reports?
Can I ask actually a question to Bill through you?
Yep.
I thought my understanding, a few months ago, was that we were going to have a goal of having the Budget and Finance Committee of Bridgewater, the Budget and Finance Committee of Rainham, the Budget and Finance Committee of, of the School Committee, or whatever the case, all get together and start that dialogue about what we can do to make our communications better, so that we don't run into the same problem of Rainham doing one thing, Bridgewater doing the other. I'm, I'm a little confused as why the Budget and Finance Committee is only specifically meeting with the School Committee, when I didn't think that's what, and, and I don't think we gave direction, but I thought we kind of agreed that we need to get Rainham in these discussions as well, not to tell them what they can or can't do, but to open up the lines of communication that we really don't have. So I'm, I'm a little perplexed that we're doing all of this with one side of the district and the other. The other side, as far as I know, has no idea this is going.
Didn't we have someone from the Rainham Finance Committee here? I thought we did.
No, my understanding is no one was here from the Rainham side.
A gentleman from, sitting to my right, no, he was sitting directly to my right.
Yeah.
I didn't catch his name.
So I'm, I'm really perplexed.
Right. And, and that's great. The workshop was to understand the revenue models. I think the Bridgewater revenue model is, is pretty mature at this point. And to, to better understand the difficulties we got into at the end of the year on the budget, we wanted to understand and, and help everyone understand the revenue projections for the Town of Bridgewater. It's not out of the question to do, to invite Rainham and to expand it to the Finance Committee, but it, it's an effort to get at least the district and the Town of Bridgewater more informed about each other's processes. To get them to, to look at how Tony comes up with his revenue estimates for the various sources of income that we have, starting with the taxes and evolving into excise taxes, personal property taxes, and then talk about the shareable revenue model. That's, that's, directly contributes to the Bridgewater assessment and doesn't necessarily help or hurt the Rainham piece of that, that puzzle. So we wanted to look at the overall, the fundamental overall picture of revenue for the school district, those pieces that are not directly attributed to the assessments, but other sources of, of revenue. We talked about Chapter 70, we talked about Chapter 71, we talked about the difficulty with the, the Governor's budget versus the House budget versus the timing of those budgets. And I think it was just to help, in this case, the, the participants better understand the overall process to, to get to that.
In which I appreciate, but you're going on a pretty big assumption, in my opinion, that Bridgewater has it all figured out. We don't know, Rainham could have a better process. They, maybe they could learn for some things, but they're part of this district. And I think we're going, we're, we're going back and sending a message that Bridgewater's gonna do its own thing, and Rainham's gonna do its own thing, and it's gonna put the district in the middle of that. And so I, I'm a little frustrated at the fact to find out that we had this discussion, we take all this time. I thought we all agreed that Rainham needs to come to the table, and yet now you have, the Budget and Finance Committee has a meeting with the School Committee, with the Finance side, and Rainham's not at the table. I just, and, and I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just really conveying my frustration at the fact that it seems like we haven't learned from the last few years of budget talks about getting our lines of communications back into play so that we can work together, instead of one town doing one thing and one doing the other, and having us doing a fire drill to get things accomplished. That's just, that's my, my frustration.
And I, I agree with what you're saying, and I will say that I thought the meeting was very constructive. It was, it was very good. That element, Counselor George, certainly was missing. We got, or at least I got, and I know Counselor Wood and Town Counselor Gibbons did, at least 10 times now, a presentation on our revenue projections and our forecasting for revenue going forward for the next two or three years. I'd like to see from the fin, I would also like to add, maybe for a future meeting, is to include the, the Budget Director from Rainham to come in to explain where's Rainham's revenue gonna be for the next three or four years, too. Because that's the ex, that's what we did Tuesday, a week ago, is we got, we got the same budget presentation, pretty much, that we've been getting since, since January from, from our Finance guy. And at the same time, I learned a lot from the School Department, when they explained how they get their revenue piece from school aid and transportation. I got a little clarification on how the transportation reimbursement works, that I learned something from that. So it was, in that essence, it was good, but I, I do think at the same time, for future, I think, Bill, maybe we can include and ask...
Oh, so, so before we go there, so we're gonna work through the other two workshops.
Right.
Same, same population, same audience. In the fall, when we get the budget resolution together, which I'm hoping that the Finance Committee actually takes over that policy statement, although they still have trouble, trouble meeting, that's the time that we start planning the actual timelines and tasks. And I would agree that we expand the audience at that point and include Rainham's Director, Finance Committee.
Yeah, but I, but, I'm sorry, with all due respect, the whole idea was to start the dialogue in the summer and then work towards going to that type of process, instead of us getting in the same room with Rainham for the first time in a long time and going through that process.
We're not talking about budget numbers for next year yet. We're talking about process.
Bill, it doesn't, that's not my point. The point is the dialogue. The point is inviting them to the, they may not come. You can invite them, and they may say no, and that's fine. But we should have extended the opportunity for them to be there as well. They are part of the district.
The, the point, Bill, is that we've received a presentation regarding revenue, and now we're gonna get a presentation regarding expenses on Tuesday night from, from our Finance guy. I would like to have that same dialogue and see what, where is Rainham's revenue expenses going to be this year.
How does that affect the Town of Bridgewater? How does that affect expenses and revenue for the Town of Bridgewater?
It's the same thing. It's the same thing.
How does, how does Bridgewater's revenue affect...
It affects the school district. The school district needs to know.
It affects the school district.
The school district needed to know.
You can't manufacture revenue for Bridgewater unless we get Elm Street up and running.
No, 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 we're not talking about that, Bill. We're not talking about manufacturing anything.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
This is about what we talked about in regards to getting the, both towns together with the School Committee. We're right back to working in silos. This is, and again, in my opinion.
So we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that at the next meeting, but I, I'd like to see what we have seen from our Finance guy, the same information from the Rainham Finance guy, so the School Committee knows. I knew all the, I went through that presentation from Tony six, seven, eight, nine, 10 times since January.
That's great.
Okay? Now I'd like to hear and see...
No, you know what?
Now I want to know, what does Rainham have going forward for the next three or four years, like, like we do, to help the schools?
That meeting was recorded specifically so anyone that has BTV can follow the same thing that we've heard four or five times.
But you missed the element, Counselor George is correct. The element that's missing is, well, what is, what is the Town of Rainham preparing over the next few years for revenue and expenses that they think they can do for the schools, so the School Committee can get a better idea where the towns stand? Or do they already know that? Do they already know what Rainham's is, and they, they don't want to hear that? I don't know.
Just the invite, like I said, the invitation.
Invitation, I think, should be there, but that, it's a point well taken. I mean, I thought, but I thought it was a great meeting, Bill. It was a good, it was constructive.
I'm not criticizing the meeting or anything like that. I heard it was a great meeting. My, my, my issue is the fact that you didn't have the other, the other town in the district at least invited in or at the table to, to participate in those discussions on their end.
Okay. So we'll move on. Does anybody else have a comment about that? We can move on. I believe it's after 10:30. Do we have to take a vote?
Motion to take up Item L after 10:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. What I'm gonna say about L is there are three orders here, and none of them can be voted on tonight. As Counselor Wood already stated, the Budget and Finance Committee has approved them. The Finance Committee needs to have a quorum. Their recommendation is needed prior to us voting on that. So we will postpone this till our next meeting of September 3rd.
Motion to take up Item M after 10:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item M, there's nothing there. Oh, ordinance, general ordinance, stormwater ordinance. At their meeting, this requires a voice vote. Ordinance FY20001, general ordinance, stormwater ordinance. At their meeting held July 30th, 2019, the Community Economic Development Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval. This may not be finally considered this evening as it requires advertising.
Motion to send to advertising.
Second.
Motion has been made and second. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to take up Item N after 10:30.
Second.
Is there any discussion on taking Item N after 10:30? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just a point of clarification. Once, item, I want to direct the Town Clerk, the Council Clerk, not the Town Clerk, the Council Clerk, that once we take action on Item A and D, that she move forward with scheduling a public, a hearing. Okay. Item A, Order FY20014, Transfer Order High Street Dam and Bridge Preliminary Work. This is from the Town Manager.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
The motion is a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Order FY20015, Acceptance of a Gift, Bridgewater State University.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
The motion is a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Order FY20016, Acceptance of a Gift, Massachusetts State Historical Records Advisory Board.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Acting under, I, Order FY20017, Mitchell Elementary School Project.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Point of, point of information. The order specifically says 55.63% of eligible. I, I find it's a little misleading, because while it's true that of eligible, what we heard tonight was the actual reimbursement rate for the entire project is in the, what was it, 44-point-something percent?
I, I'd suggest that this language is probably statutorily driven.
It, it's, for all intents and purposes, it's, it's language that is required by the MSBA.
That was a point of information. Was, all right, thank you. Any other, just go ahead and you have a...
Oh, no, I was gonna, I was gonna...
There's a motion, there's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, order, Order FY20018, 2019, huh?
Point of information.
Sure.
This is the special warrant, warrant, uh, special warrant for October 19th. Why is the amount for the debt exclusion not included in the actual language for the vote?
That is a good question, and, and that is something that is probably best answered by referring to the law. These ballot questions in terms of debt exclusions are very, never include numbers. The appropriation that you make includes the number with, you know, some specificity, and, and the ballot question never does. That doesn't preclude us from putting in, you know, an informational item that says, "Here's the amount, approximate amount that you're voting," but it never includes, the vote never includes the actual amount.
Nor is it allowed to. Is it a term of honor?
No. Thank you.
And this can just stay at the council level?
Right. So when, it says October 19th, 2019, when do we take in a formal vote to have the special election on that day?
So if all, if, if all goes according to schedule, you will take a vote at your next meeting, which is September 3rd, and that will give the Town Clerk more than the 35 days in order to do the ballot. You, it is up to you. We're using this Oc, sorry, October 19th date, because that's what has been suggested by the School Building Committee. You can choose to have the, the date whenever you want to have the date, and so I'll throw that out there for the council consideration. I would not recommend Columbus Day weekend, and I would not recommend Veterans Day weekend, and I probably would not recommend the weekend that the time changes. But otherwise, I think that leaves you...
And it has to be within the 120 days of SBA approval, which is gonna be the end of August.
Correct.
So it has to happen essentially by...
End of December, so...
End of December, yeah. Sooner or rather.
Right. I, I agree. I think that if we come back here, well, we will come back here September 3rd, I, I think we should be prepared to vote for a date. And October 19th certainly can be a date, and that's kind of like the target date, from what I'm hearing. It can be early, it can be later, but that's kind of the target date. And I agree with that, I agree with this date. I like, I like that October 19th day. I don't know why. I just like October 19th. Looks good.
The Town Clerk needs 35 days from our vote, so we, we're constrained on the front end of when we can set it.
But October 19th, from, from September...
But we can't, we couldn't say, "Have an election on September 10th."
No, 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 no. Yep.
Oh, Peter.
There's no state election on the first Tuesday.
Not this year.
Nothing happening.
Municipal elections in November, yeah.
Can I just add to that? Just, well, I'm just wondering if it might be important to reach out to the Building Committee to see if that October 19th date, given the summer, September, kids are just coming back to school, you know, what the communications plan is to the town, and whether they feel like they'd have enough time to get the message out, you know, to parents to see a large turnout for the vote. So I just caution that, you know, I'm not sure whose responsibility is, but maybe get their input if they feel like they can turn that around, you know, very quickly. I know there's been a lot of turnover on the School Building Committee, and maybe short members. Maybe we push it out another week or two in order to give them a little bit more time. People are finishing up summer, then kids are off in September. You know, by the time you know it, September is over, now we're looking at the 1st of October, trying to get this message out to parents who maybe just starting to pay attention to it. That's all.
I'm sure those comments were duly noted.
So we don't need to take any vote, any action, it just stays right here. It'll be back September 3rd on the agenda. Resolution FY20001, Supporting County, Plymouth County Sheriff's Department, The Farm, Petting Zoo, and Horticultural Center. I'm offering this resolution, this is just a first reading, and we'll take a vote on this on September 3rd, and I'll, and I'll read it. There's been a lot of issues in the newspaper and on the radio... between the county government and the sheriff's department regarding a county farm. It includes a petting zoo for animals, for children to go in and pet some of the animals he has down there, growth, growing of vegetables that feeds, feeds certain families in Plymouth County and so forth. There's an issue regarding the land, the lease, and insurance that's going on between the commissioners, and there's some, some discussion that they are going to be evicted or have to vacate that operation. I think it's important that the communities of Plymouth County support the sheriff's department in trying to keep what he has to do to keep that farm going. So I offer this. Whereas, for more than 100 years, the sheriff of Plymouth County has operated a 90-acre farm on Aubrey Street in Plymouth, which includes a farm stand and a free petting zoo. And whereas, the farm has also served as a correctional rehabilitation program for inmates of Plymouth County Correctional Facility. Whereas, the farm, petting zoo, and horticultural center are valuable community asset, not only as one of the most popular visitor attractions in Plymouth, but throughout the communities they outreach to, donating thousands of pounds of fresh vegetables to local food pantries each year. Whereas, recently, there has been a dispute over the land and the requirement for a lease, including provisions for liability insurance. Whereas, the dispute threatens to close the operation, farm stand, and petting zoo to the public. Therefore, we, the town council of Bridgewater, do strongly support the Plymouth County sheriff and his efforts to keep the farm open, the farm stand and petting zoo operational, and to the public, and to see and hopefully have an amicable resolution reached for this valuable and beloved local resource. And we'll take a vote on that next, we can't vote on anything, can't vote on this tonight, so I offer that, and we'll talk about this in September 3, unless it's been resolved by then. Who knows?
Motion to take up item O after 10:30?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens' comments? Are there any citizens here that would like to address the council?
To make comment on your last statement on the farm?
It's your floor.
Well, I think there's a little more history that we should be told here.
Identify yourself.
Sandra Wright, 150 East Street, Bridgewater. I would like to go back to before 2009. The sheriff was part of the county, and after 2009, he became part of the state. At that time, over the many, many years, we have tried to get a contract with the sheriff because of the lack of insurance that was on there. So what we're trying to do is that our concerns are, is that, you know, any of his animals, or if anybody gets hurt on the land, it's going to cost you as a taxpayer to pay for that. We do need the insurance on there. I don't know if you remember two, three years ago where Barnstable was, I think, fined by the state because they had given land away down in Barnstable. We can no longer do that years ago. Maybe we could do that, but we can't do that anymore. We have to charge fair value of the land, and we also have to have insurance on there. That protects the public that goes on there, which he has a lot of public on there. Excuse me. So I think that, you know, what's being said out there is not the actual truth. We're just asking him to come to the table, to sign a contract, and pay what, you know, would be fair value to all the taxpayers, for all the taxpayers. We don't just provide the farm for Plymouth. We also cover 26 other towns in the city of Brockton. So it's only fair for all the taxpayers that he pays his portion. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens here wish to speak during the citizens' open forum of our meeting? Anybody else? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn?
Is a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned till September 3.